Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda? Do we have any additions, or?
We have no changes.
Nothing.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. At this time, we have an announcement by the board chair. The county board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the county board's consent before adjusting the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segments or public hearings. However, public comments on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meeting, please turn off cell phones and turn your cellphone to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum? Anybody back there for open forum? Oh, you got it. You're right.
But Dwayne is actually, he's got an agenda item for later, though, but so.
Okay.
He did sign up, but he's here for the item.
So, do you just want to wait for that, Dwayne?
Oh, please, yes.
Okay. Jeff Hans?
Hanson.
Or Hanson?
I don't know if I'm on for a different later part.
Oh, for Chris Bird, right.
Yeah, you're with Chris Birds.
Yeah, okay. Should I wait, or?
Yeah, I would prefer that you'd wait till then. And Craig Hanson?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. Thank you. And we'll talk about that at the deal, at that time when Chris Bird is here. The consent agenda, we have items one through 14. Does anybody wish for any of them to be pulled for further consideration?
Mr. Chair, if I just ask a question quickly. What's been county practice on sending off thank yous in regards to the donation that was made on item 12?
Good question. Troy, does your office send thank yous regarding don? This is a donation for, is it K-9?
Mm-hmm.
Does your office send the thank you?
Generally, yes. Generally, yes, we do send thank yous to those who join the board. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have anything they wish to have pulled? Why don't I entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda of items one through 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve? Opposed? Carried. Monty Hedley?
Mr. Chair, Dwayne J. Walter is here to address this issue.
Okay, Dwayne, floor is yours.
First, I'd like to say you never want to put a former politician in front of a microphone.
Okay.
But I'm going to keep the grief. First of all, I want to thank you for doing the pledge. I really appreciate that, still doing it. As we all know, some people aren't doing that anymore, and I really thank you guys for doing that. Yeah, I am Dwayne J. Walter. I'm here on behalf of Full American Legion membership, and I'm here for the memorial. And first of all, I'd like to just say again, thank you for everything you've done so far, because without you guys' help and assistance, that thing wouldn't exist. And I talked to my colleagues, we had a meeting Monday night, and I've had nothing but positive feedback, and all my colleagues have nothing but positive feedback from the community in the surrounding area, so I think it was a good thing to do. That's first thing. Second one I'm here is, there's been, we had some discussion about putting security cameras out on that site. We're worried about vandalism, spray paint, somebody coming with a can of spray paint. And I talked to the county administrator a month or so, two months ago, about the issue. And as it all ended up with Chief Deputy Neil Jacobson. That's who's been, I've been working with, and he's did all the legwork on it. He's got the proposal, and if you want more detail, he's going to talk, I think, a little bit about it, if you can answer your questions. I'm technologically challenged, I don't know about that stuff, but we got a good proposal. We'd like to get the cameras installed, and that leads into the last thing I want to say is, on Memorial Day, we're having a memorial dedication out the site. It's scheduled for 11 o'clock AM.
You need a script on, ready open for these?
Joanna, could you mute yourself, please?
There's a couple of little ones now.
There we go. We're good.
Okay, yeah, we're having a program, memorial dedication program. It'll be Memorial Day, 11 o'clock AM, at the site. And we got a program, we went over it the other night, it's going to be about a 35, 45-minute program. We got some music, we got a speaker, and everyone is invited to come. Bring your family, bring your friends, bring your relatives, whomever. After that, at approximately 12 o'clock, we're serving a kind of a picnic lunch up at the Legion Club, if everybody knows where that is. Brocks, burgers, hot dogs, beans, whatever, kind of a picnic thing. And everybody's certainly invited to attend that. We're hoping to get at least a couple hundred people. It's going to depend on the weather, as we all know, what Memorial Day can be sometimes. But if it's a nice day, we're hoping for, we'll get a good crowd to come out there, put the program on, we have the dedication. The statues will be there, we've got, the three statues are going to be placed out there. And the financing of the security cameras, we've got the money for. However, as you know, I always say this, if the county wants to contribute anything, we're not going to refuse anything. So, but I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Deputy Neil Jacobson, he'll give you some details. And, but again, I just can't tell you guys enough, and ladies, how much we appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Morning.
For those that don't see me very often, Neil Jacobson, Chief Deputy. As Dwayne stated, they approached the county this past winter, and with their wishes to see if they could get a surveillance camera system up to cover their memorial site. With that, it kind of benefited the sheriff's office also. With that project, our plan is also to put a second camera up in that same location. The sheriff wanted to create what is referred to as a safe swap site. So if parents want to have a location for child custody exchanges, or social media property exchanges, buying and selling, we have a secure location with video surveillance. So, as Dwayne stated, they're pretty much taking care of 99% of the cost of this project. The rest of the funds are going to be coming from the sheriff's office budget. And actually, as we speak, they are laying conduit for power and ethernet cables, so we're on schedule for the project. Any questions?
Questions for him? Sounds like a good project. Great project. Thank you, absolutely.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, Neil again does have proposals. If anybody wants to see the ins and outs of it, he's got the proposals, so.
Okay. I think I'm good with.
Seems like a great project, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move to approve the requested additions to the.
We also can talk about.
Go ahead.
We also can talk about the sidewalk. The sidewalk. Join, you, we can talk about the sidewalk, though, connecting the.
I found out, Monty, that that's actually, I thought it was going to be this year, we're talking about, Foley's going to put a walkway in over along 23. I thought it was going to be in 21. I was informed it's going to be in 2022.
It's two, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But eventually, what we want to do, eventually what we want to do is, when that project does go on, there will be a walkway on the north side and a sidewalk on the south side. That's my impression, anyway. We would like to put a sidewalk coming from the north side walkway upright to the monument. It'd be an eight-foot sidewalk, you know, all the, we meet all the AD regulations, everything would be done, probably because solid concrete would do it. We'd like to do that, but that'll be in 2022.
Okay.
But again, if we can do it now, rather than come back in 2022 and ask you for permission, we'd like to do that sidewalk. And that way, you could access it from, again, the walkway going along 23, and you could also access it the way it is now from the parking lot. You'd have two accesses.
And we have no issues with that. That sounds fine, you know.
If there is, we've got plenty of time. If there is a problem, we can work it out.
Mr. Chair, so this is going to run in conjunction with the 23 project?
Well, I guess the timing is somewhat, I guess, up to the Legion, but, right, the trail is going to be done in '22 with the trunk hybrid 23 project.
Right, and that's probably the best time to actually do that, in case something happens.
Yeah, the information we have, Steve, is that MinDOT's doing a whole thing. They're going to widen the road, you know, you know that whole thing. And we've talked to MinDOT, MinDOT's going to put the, they're going to have to put kind of a little bridge over the ditch.
Right.
So they're going to take care of that. That's what I've been told, anyway, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you probably tried to do that in conjunction with that 23 corridor, when they're going to start that.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
Okay.
Again, Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve that, and I'm certainly willing to amend the motion to include the sidewalk when the 23 corridor project is done, so they can get going on their security system right away.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry.
Beth?
Beth, did you?
Beth, second. Yeah, any other discussion? I think it's a great idea. I'm glad to see MinDOT's spending some money to put that bridge in.
Thank you for your work on that, too, Dwayne. Yes, thank you.
So we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Otherwise, call Lucrestin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Is Nadine, or? No, Nadine's not.
Heather's with us today.
No.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Julia Rollback, Assistant Auditor Treasurer.
Yeah.
And I'm here on Nadine's behalf this morning. She had a medical family emergency this morning, apologized she couldn't be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
She informed me that you needed just an update on how things are going in our area, and I'm happy to report the tax statements were mailed out on March 26th, along with the validation notices. And as far as DMV goes, we have our new full-time DMV person started last Thursday. So right now, we are taking walk-ins for tab renewals and DNR registrations.
Great.
But we are still continuing appointments for the titles and driver's license, because they do take a little extra time.
Okay.
So, basically, that's what we got happening in our area, and the taxes are rolling in.
Okay.
Good.
Any questions from anybody? I guess, did we have any kickbacks or any call-ins when the tax statements went out?
I haven't heard of anything. It's just a couple comments. Some people only got one envelope for returning their payment in.
Okay.
And that was a vendor issue on some of the statements. We got calls on that. But otherwise, I think it's been really good, because the dollars have already been rolling in for them already. So, and they're using the Dropbox. There are a few counter people coming in, so I think it's going really well at the moment.
All right, that's great to hear.
Mr. Chair, I would assume even with the walk-ins, you've still got a full appointment schedule?
So for walk-in for taxes, those, they can just walk in?
I'm sorry, for.
Oh, I'm sorry, the driver's license, back to that one?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that is still full. We are really full on that one. The standards, we, you know, if somebody walks in and we happen to have a cancellation, just like a doctor's office, we will try to accommodate those people that really need to get in and have something done.
Thank you.
So, Julie, our staff is all in DMV is up to par, or we still got somebody in training?
Well, the two people that we have helping, they have that 60-day background check that needs to be done.
Okay.
So, and those, you know, our one person that we started already, she is still not completed, but they're able to do DNR registration and tab renewals, because they do qualify for that, the way they are set up in the system. So that's why we're able to assist that, but as far as driver's license and titles, those need a little more time on those.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, again, just for clarification, do you have two full-timers in there now, or three?
We have two full-time DMV employees.
Yeah.
And then we have the one who will be working both the treasurer's office and the DMV.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
It's nice to have staff.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Julie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Troy Heck? Sheriff is next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
So the first item I have on the agenda today is the first of several rendezvous that we'll be having at the board meetings this spring. It seems that spring brings out thankfulness in people, because all the weeks that are proclaimed to provide thank yous to staff in law enforcement and volunteers and other things tend to happen in April and May. So I am happy to be before you today to talk about the work that, pardon me, the work that the professionals in our dispatch center are public safety answering point to. April 11th to 17th of this year is the designated week to observe National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This week honors the men and the women that work in dispatch centers and PSAPs all across our nation. For those of you who haven't had the opportunity to sit and watch what happens in a dispatch center or PSAP, it's truly a remarkable place to be. It can be hours and hours of nothing, and then suddenly, every line that is available is ringing, and every person that has access to a radio is trying to talk to you, and you're getting emails and faxes, and it's an incredible amount of information that can come through a huge funnel into the dispatch center. And these folks that we have working as dispatchers are truly special people. They have the ability to take in all these multiple means of communication at once, sort them out, make sense to them, and figure out who is the person that needs to go help this other person that's in need. So they are truly remarkable people, and they are the first link generally in the chain of, in the chain of first response, and in the chain of law enforcement and medical and fire. And I'm just still very grateful for the people that we have working in our PSAP. So I bring before you today a proclamation that I would hope that we would see fit to adopt and have the chair sign to declare that the week of April 11th to 17th is observed as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Benton County.
Any questions for, on this subject? Otherwise, I'll entertain a.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to declare a resolution proclaiming Public Telecommunication Week. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Troy, I think your staff does a phenomenal job back there, and as we communicated, it can be very tough at times, being on the fire department, we see that, and we thank all your staff for what they do, and it does get very cumbersome at times.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I would add that if any of the Commissioners have the opportunity to go into that room, it's pretty interesting.
I've been waiting patiently for Troy to give us the okay to go back and look when it opens up.
Hopefully, very soon.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks, Troy, on that one.
Thank you, Commissioners. So the next item I have on the agenda is the presentation of the annual report. This has been a tradition for as long as I've been at the Benton County Sheriff's Office, that an annual summation of our activities is given to the board and to the public to better inform both the board and the public as to what is happening in their sheriff's office. This year is, this annual report of 2020 is one unlike any other that I've given, or one like any other I've seen, of course. If we all think back to what was on our minds on January 1st of 2020, and what we envisioned that year to bring, and compare that to how we felt on December 31st of 2020, and look back on what all had unfolded, I don't think any of us could have predicted any of what had happened in 2020. And of course, the interesting thing about time is that it only moves in one direction, and as we're moving through each little slice of time, we do the best we can with that moment in time and make the best decisions we can. And it's only through reflection in the lens of hindsight that we're able to get maybe a clearer picture. So I'm hoping that with a few months of reflection here, this will provide kind of our first glimpse back at the year that was 2020, and I look forward to being able to look a little more clearly at this year and 2021, as time does move on. So obviously, the biggest thing that affected our response in 2020 was the pandemic. Second, close second behind that was the social unrest that occurred in May following the death of George Floyd. The pandemic really affected every aspect of our operations. It began in March, April, and May, when we started working very closely with emergency management and public health to make sure that we were ready to meet the challenges that this pandemic was going to pose. It also, all throughout the year, it meant that we were having to first struggle to secure sources of PPE, making sure we were modifying our workspaces appropriately for our staff. The ever-changing guidance was a task to stay up on and make sure that we were doing the most current and the best practices that we could find, and then trying to meet the demands of the work with quarantines and illnesses that our employees would suffer. All this while we're also trying to meet our commitment to the public, to make sure that we're providing them with the public safety services they deserve. One thing that helped, in my opinion, through all this was our mission statement and our vision statement. We came up with this back in 2016, and our mission statement is to keep Benton County safe by enforcing laws, providing public safety services, and building community partnerships with respect and integrity. Having that as a guiding light in the darkness, as it were, I think, helped us to ensure that we are staying focused on the right path, even through all the adversity that we had to deal with. So having just talked about the PSAP, I'll start there, because again, that is the first point of contact that most members of the public have with, excuse me, have with the sheriff's office. As you know, our PSAP answers not only 911 calls in Benton County, but also the administrative calls for our office, the Foley Police and Fire Department, Rice Police and Fire Department, and Sauk Rapids Police and Fire Department. We dispatch for all those agencies as well, using the Armored Radio System. With the implementation of COVID procedures, our dispatchers took on the task of having to ask some of those questions that we're all now familiar with about fever and cough and temperature and all that. So they were really our first point of screening, to make sure that our first responders were going to be kept safe. One of the things that we implemented with the onset of COVID was, again, that screening and making sure that anyone that wanted to have in-person contact with any first responder went through that screening and was cleared. Or if they weren't cleared, we were being sure to advise that first responder group that they needed to take appropriate precautions. In 2020, there were 26,721 initial complaint reports. Every, anytime a call comes into the dispatch center, they start an initial complaint report to log that. This was about 1,100 fewer ICRs than in 2019. When I look at the data, it appears that a lot of that decline happened in the beginning of the pandemic, in March and April, when people were spending a lot more time at home and not out and about as much. Our demand for calls went down noticeably then. Typically, however, our busiest time period in the PSAP was 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, with a peak between 1:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Fridays generated the most calls, and Sundays generated the fewest. That's all pretty typical. The PSAP had a total of 44,564 incoming and outgoing telephone calls. That's, I mean, that's a lot of phone calls for each one of these folks to answer. It was 753 fewer than the previous year, again, I think attributed to the downturn we saw in March and April, but still, that is a lot of calls. 28,000 or so of those were for the sheriff's office, and just short of 6,000 of those were associated with Sauk Rapids Police Department. The next division I'll highlight is the Civil Process and Warrant Division. So COVID hit this division pretty hard as well, with all the changes that happened regarding lower civil process requests because of, because of, you know, just not wanting to get out and circulate with people, and because of the pause on mortgage foreclosures and courts seeking alternatives to arrest warrants, we saw declines in those statistics as well. Our warrants issued declined by about 300, I'm sorry, by about 482, and we had about 300 fewer civil process requests. Our Patrol Division met the challenges of COVID-19 and the ever-changing guidance by securing PPE, and again, making sure that we are using appropriate precautions whenever we talk to people in person. In mid-June, they were also tasked with having to help St. Cloud maintain law and order after the incidents of civil unrest in St. Cloud that was caused by some incorrect information being circulated on social media. There were several days where we assisted the St. Cloud Police Department with either taking calls for service in their city, or actively having our officers with the St. Cloud officers addressing incidents of social unrest and property damage and violence going on. In total, in 2020, our Patrol Division responded to 15,688 calls. That was actually 256 more than 2019. Traffic stops was the single largest activity. Coming in right behind that, we had assistance to the public and other agencies, towards zero-death traffic details, suspicious activities, medical emergencies, and alarms. Our five most reported crimes in 2020 were theft, domestic abuse, fraud, harassment, and DWI. I noted that for the first time in a number of years, burglary dropped off that top five, so that was a good thing. Most of the activity in the Patrol Division happened between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM, with that spike mid-afternoon between 2:00 and 5:00. And again, Mondays are the busiest, Sundays are the slowest. When we look at crimes in Benton County, we look to the Uniform Crime Report that's published each year by the BCA. The Uniform Crime Report is always a year behind, so the most recent numbers come from 2019. In 2019, our Part I crimes, those are our more serious crimes, were 42% lower than the state average. And our Part II crimes were 40% lower. Our overall crime rate was 41% lower than the state average. So we're quite proud of that. We think we're doing a good, you know, we're making a good effort to make sure this is a safe community, and we think those numbers reflect that. In addition to the 15,000, or included in the 15,000 or so calls assigned to the patrol staff, there are a number that are done by our administrative support staff. That includes records checks, permits to carry a pistol. Those were 956 applications in 2020, permits to purchase a pistol, there were 205 of those. And I do note that that number of permits to carry, being 956, that's up 86% from the previous year, and that 956 number is a record. That's the most we've ever issued in the sheriff's office. In our Investigative Division, we have three full-time investigators that work on general crimes, and we have two that work, two full-time investigators that work on drug crimes and gang crimes. The Investigative Division remained busy. They had a 4% increase in the cases that they handled, and out of the 141 cases that they were assigned, 126 of those were cleared, creating an 89% clearance rate, which is fantastic. We're very proud of the work they do. Our Violent Defender Task Force investigated 49 cases in Benton County in 2020, and methamphetamine continues to be our most commonly found and most problematic controlled substance in Benton County. Our Jail Division was, I'd say profoundly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The, all jails across the state and across the country, when COVID became a thing, started to work to reduce the population because of the fact that this disease spreads so readily in a congregate setting like you have in jails. So we worked with our judges to find ways that we could keep the most serious and dangerous people in custody while finding alternatives for those that were able to do, we were able to do so safely, to ensure that we had a lower count of people in our jail. That made COVID much more manageable for our inmates and our staff. We've, we've not had any outbreaks of COVID in our facility. We've had manageable amounts of sickness in our staff, but I think that the steps we took base, very much helped keep Benton County safe, and very much made sure we were able to continue to keep the most dangerous people off the streets and in our facility where they belong. Our average daily population in 2020, as I said, was down significantly at 41.95 inmates. That's a decrease of 25.41 average daily population compared to 2019. Also, our number of people booked was down about 800, almost 900 inmates. Interestingly enough, though, our average length of stay went up. So the people that we had, as I said, were the people that truly needed to be in jail, and I think the amount of time they spent there reflects that. and I think the amount of time they spent there reflects that. The people that remained in our facility, again, were those that were most challenging to deal with. There were some people that had, either because of their criminal history or perhaps because of mental illness, presented real challenges to our staff, and I'm very proud of the work that they did to make sure that these individuals were kept safely and securely in our facility. Unsurprisingly, all of the fees we collect for the various services we provide in our jail were down. We do collect a booking fee, a work release fee, and a daily boarding fee from our inmates, and the amount we collected in 2020 totaled just short of $28,000. We also routinely housed prisoners for other counties, with all counties reducing their jail population. We haven't really done much in the way of housing since probably about March or April. However, in those first four months, we were able to bring in about $111,000 in jail revenue from prisoner boarding. Our sentenced-to-serv crew out of the jail also had a challenging year between COVID, low inmate counts, and a medical absence from the crew leader. They did manage to get 717 hours of work in on projects, with an estimated value of their projects at about $75,000. We do maintain a core group of volunteers that help us with a number of things in the sheriff's office. Our Mounted Patrol is a group of riders that practice their craft and make sure that they are ready to assist us either at security events such as at the fair or at a search-and-rescue event that we might need them for. In 2020, they worked a total of 98 hours, which obviously is lower than what we would normally expect out of them, but they were still active. We have a group of citizens that serve us as reserve deputies. We have them participate in non-confrontational things such as maybe doing traffic direction or some security at the fair. They also do winter cabin checks and those type of duties for us. Our 10 volunteer reserve deputies put in a total of 170 hours in 2020, and we're fortunate enough to have about 100 individuals who come in and do programs in the jail. Their access to the facility was limited and changed a lot with the way we delivered services, but they still put in almost 180 hours of programming in our jail. Our public outreach efforts were also hampered a bit by COVID. We had to cancel our Police Activity League program and our Youth ATV courses in 2020 because of COVID restrictions. We were able to carry out our DARE program. Our DARE officer was able to do remote learning with the students. The schools were kind enough to continue to allow us to do that, and because of that, 505 DARE students in the six Benton County schools were presented with DARE curriculum even in the challenging times of 2020. We're looking forward to being able to get some of these outreach efforts going once again in 2021. We're making plans to do that. And finally, I'll touch on the fact that, if you're not aware, we do have presence on several social media platforms, our Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor accounts we use to distribute crime prevention information and safety information to our citizens. We've found some real success, I think, in getting that information out and also in using that as a way to gather information from our citizens. We've had a number of warrants that have been resolved due to tips from our social media, and we've had a number of cases that are resolved due to that. So, we're very happy that we have the outlets of social media to connect to our citizenry with and to help build that mutual relationship. We also continue to build on our partnership with the Benton County News and Sauk Rapids Herald. Is there kind enough to provide us the opportunity to submit a once-monthly column on public safety and crime prevention? So, we hope that people take advantage of those and that people put into practice some of the advice we give out there, so we can continue to keep those crime numbers low. With that, I will yield from the soapbox and entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments, right?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank the sheriff for the detailed summary. It was interesting reading. I came back to it a couple different times and was amazed at the number of items that were detailed out, and so I want to thank you and your staff for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Great report.
Very good. Well, I appreciate all the support that the board has given us, and I do value our partnership as, I think we make a good team trying to watch out for the public safety and the good of people in Benton County. So, thank you very much.
Troy, are we seeing an uptick in, like, jail population and crime or warrants for arrests or anything like that?
You know, the courts are still struggling with getting back to, I think, their full capacity. They've, on a couple of occasions now, can re-up the order that stays the execution of misdemeanor warrants, with the exception of those for domestic violence. So, we're still, we still have a number of misdemeanor warrants that we're not able to try at this time. Our jail population is creeping up generally into, like, the 40s. It's between, I'd say, mid-30s to 40s is where it's kind of stabilized for right now. I think until we see the courts really get back into the swing of their business and being able to carry out the volume, that we're probably going to stay there for a little bit. And as far as crime goes, I'd say we're continuing to see a pretty low incidence of crime out there. It might be coming up a little bit, but I still think that generally, we're going to see a very similar numbers reflected for 2021 that we've been seeing.
And I would think some of that has to do to your presence in the county, that you're out and about and on social media, that we're getting a little bit, maybe we're moving that bar in the right direction.
Well, I appreciate that. I would agree. I think that, it makes me feel like perhaps there are people that are taking to heart our admonitions at crime prevention tips, and either that or we're just really lucky, or it's a combination of both. Whatever is the cause for our low crime rate, I will take it and will continue to do what we've been doing.
All right, Aiden, thanks. Anything else? Thanks for the report.
Thank you, Sheriff.
At this time, we'll have Jerry Machi from the Soil and Water District to provide the annual 2020 report. Morning, Jerry.
Nice to be here. I remember being here last year about the same time and having to follow Troy and his report, so. What a tough act to follow, I gotta tell you. I gave Vicki Fuehling a hard time last year, saying, "Next time, let me know so I can get in front." So, Beth, I'll say the same thing to you. That's a really tough act to follow. Benton County is a great place to live and hand to work, and I think our sheriff's department does an outstanding job, so kudos to everybody involved. You've got a copy of our annual report in your packet, and I just want to start off by saying, you know, when we put our annual report together every year, we, it gets to be a pretty long document, so we do trim a few things out of there every year just to keep it, you know, to a manageable level. I also want to say, you know, the annual report, you know, it's labeled the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Report. We have so many partners, so, you know, it's more like a conservation report for the county, I would say. And a lot of the stuff you see in there is also a result of the strong partnership we have with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, so I would be remiss if I didn't make mention of that. And I'm going to try to keep this a little bit shorter than maybe in past years, so if I'm flying through stuff too quickly, you can stop me at any time, otherwise I'm going to take questions at the end, so. If you wanted to follow along, I would appreciate that. I'm going to start out on page six of our annual report. Hope you have it in front of you? Okay, good. So, page six of the annual report, you see some graphs there. I like to start out here because one of the things that our office does is brings in a lot of revenue into the county, which does generate a lot of economic activity in our county. So I kind of like to start there to kind of get that out of the way, and you can sort of think about that as I'm going through the rest of the report. I wanted to report, to focus first on the operational revenue on the left there, and you see there's, we've got really four different revenue sources. In 2020, you'll see that federal revenue did go up percentage-wise quite a bit. We were able to access a grant, actually through our National Association of Conservation Districts, and one of three different districts in the state to access the grant funding, and she used a pay-for-staff to administer projects with the Federal Environmental Quality Incentives Program, or EQUIP is the acronym. So that was, that was a big boost for us, and we really needed it. The timing was really good, too. So, so that was big. And then the other part of our federal revenue that really doesn't show up really well in the report is, we do partner with the NRCS. We share office space, vehicles, surveying equipment, surveying equipment's $30,000, $40,000, you know, just to get it and then gets on a date because of software every few years, so, you know, things of that nature, supplies, pens, all that stuff. We share, we share a lot, a lot of stuff, so, you know, it probably comes out to, it varies year by year, but it's probably in that, you know, $40,000 to $60,000 range is pretty typical. Our state revenue was down a little bit in 2020, but our, of course, Benton County allocation was increased by $40,000, so I do want to, again, thank the county board for the continuing support there. The chart on the right, you'll see is the financial contributions for conservation projects, and I just want to point out the chart on the left is, the scale there is in hundreds of thousands. The scale on the right is in a $500,000 increments, or half-million-dollar increments. So, it's not comparing apples to oranges there. It's a scale of about five times as much. In 2020, we had another really good year with federal funding, and that's mostly, again, through the Environmental Quality Incentives Program. We've consistently been well over $1 million. I remember being here for years, quite a few years, talking about EQUIP, and, you know, we were reaching really hard to hit that million-dollar goal, and once we hit it, you know, we've stayed above it every year, and that includes 2020, so it was really positive there. State revenue was down a little bit, and the last one there, the cooperator, generally that's usually going to be about 25, about, you know, 15 to 25, somewhere in that range, percent of our project cost, the landowners help contribute. Just want to mention one thing. It looks like things were down quite a bit as compared to 2019. 2019 was the year of the Little Rock Lake drawdown, so that was a big project for us. And then we did a really large underground regional sediment treatment system in the city of St. Cloud, about $200,000 project. So those two projects kind of made 2019 look a little bit different than typical. So as you can see, the pandemic definitely affected our office, but it didn't have a huge effect on the amount of conservation going on in Benton County. It made things challenging, I'll say that. Any questions on those? Okay. I'm going to move on to page 10 then. Just because the Environmental Quality Incentives Program is such a large program for Benton County, and the acronym, again, is EQUIP, we use the EQUIP program a lot. In 2020, we had 20 contracts for just under $1.4 million. We slipped down to fourth in the state, which is still a pretty big accomplishment. Benton County is a really small county geographically, and we consistently do well in comparison to some of the larger counties like Stearns. And I think Stearns was maybe second or third in the state. We're really close to them, so from a dollar perspective and also the number of contracts, we do very well in Benton County. And the summary on the right kind of shows the typical projects that we would have in Benton County. So you can see quite a bit in the egg area as far as livestock with the two miner pits and four stacking slabs, et cetera. So, we're pretty proud of the work that our landowners do in Benton County, and that's definitely a big program. I just want to point out something really quickly on page 16, if you wouldn't mind. Last year, we were able to get some drone footage. We've got, I forgot what page it is, but we've got, I call their technical service area staff, they're housed in Wade Park, and they cover from Benton County all the way to Big Stone. And we purchased a drone last year through our TSA, so we were able to get out and get a few pictures of our projects as COVID allowed. And I just wanted to point out that picture there, kind of on the left side, the top picture, some of the erosion that we're seeing in our fields. And of course, we've seen it for years and years through the aerial photography, but when you get up there with a drone, it's a completely different perspective, you know, especially as you start flying in lower. And I just, if you're not real familiar with the countryside in Benton County, we're kind of flat, but we've got high-water table soils. So that's just a really good picture of what we see all over in Benton County. So, it's a big resource concern. It's a high priority of our water plan, and so we try to do as much we can to address All right, I want to talk about Little Rock Lake watershed a little bit. Let's, tell you what, let's go to page 29. So in the Little Rock Lake watershed, which is one of our, Little Rock Lake is, of course, one of our highest priority water quality areas that we're addressing with our partners up in Morrison County. The watershed split about 50/50 Morrison and Benton Counties. So, we've continued to do projects in 2020, but of course, the drawdown was in 2019, and everybody was trying to figure out, was the drawdown successful or not? So I just want to speak a little bit about that. If you look at the graphs on the bottom left there, the top one there, if you don't know how to pronounce that, it's Seki, Seki disk, Seki disk readings. It's a round disk, it's about this big around, divided into four quadrants. Two of the quadrants are black and two of them are white. You lower that into the water until you can't see it anymore, and then you raise it up until you can just barely see the white and the black, and then you take a measurement of the length, and it measures water clarity. And in Little Rock Lake, of course, with all the algae that we have in that lake, it's a really good indicator of how much algae is in the water. So, the further you can lower that down into the water, the less algae, the better you are. So that graph you can see there, there's a couple years of data missing, but this is the data that the Little Rock Lake Association volunteers are taking on Little Rock Lake. And you can see from 2012 through 2020, we've definitely seen an increase in water clarity. See, you can see that red line is the average, and our average is going up. So, that's a combination of all the work that's been done by the farmers and the property owners around Little Rock Lake, but also the drawdown. If you look at 2020, those were pretty good numbers. And then on the bottom there, phosphorus is basically what drives algae in Little Rock Lake, and those numbers are decreasing as well. So all good signs. We're not blessed with years and years and years of good water quality data on the streams in Little Rock, so the lake, it helps us tremendously looking at the lake water quality And just maybe just a couple more things. Page 30, some pictures there of some of the vegetation that was planted in 2019. We could get out, look at it last year. So you can see, the stuff came out really good. Couple areas of the lake, like the rock bar in the middle, made a little bit disappointed. We're hoping to get a little bit nicer bull rush stand, and bull rush can be really tough to get going, and that was one area that didn't do as well as we had hoped, but in general, around the lake, the plants did great in 2020. The bottom picture there is some bull rush. And then if you flip the page over to page 31, this is also shown on the front cover of the annual report. That's drone footage that was taken last fall as we were preparing for our tour practices, and I can't remember the exact date. I believe it was September, but don't quote me on that. But that's, you can see the sandbar, the drop-off in the shallow water on Little Rock Lake. And in talking to the residents that have lived there for years and years, they've seen a lot of pictures from airplanes, now granted, not drones, and the drones probably fly a little bit lower than the airplane, but they've never been able to see the drop, the sandbar drop-offs in the lake. So I think that's a really telling sign that we're going in the right direction. And then that also, also that bottom picture there, it might not be real evident And then that also, also that bottom picture there, um, it might not be real, uh, evident, but the little sort of black or dark brown speckles on the bottom, that's all plants. And that's going to keep the, uh, the lake on the bottom where the soil on the bottom of the lake where it belongs and not suspended so much as boat traffic and waves come through. And it's also going to cut down the waves, uh, as they're reaching the shoreline and help us, uh, stabilize the shoreline. Those are all important for that lake, so. And I skipped over, uh, quite a bit, but I want to keep it fairly short this year. So if I missed, uh, any sections of the annual report, if you had questions on it, I'd love to answer them right now.
Questions, comments? I guess as I was going through this, some of my stuff last night, if, on, uh, I think it's page eight, if you look at the, uh, BMP, um, dots from twenty, two thousand and three to 2020, you can see that almost every part of the county has had BMP projects going. I don't know how many are on there, if it even says, but there's a huge amount of little black dots on there. And that means that soil and water was involved one way or another in all these projects in that course of time, which, um, has a lot to say about your office, Jerry. And one of the questions I had was, is, are you doing, you're doing more testing on the streams in the Little Rock watershed now, right?
We are, we've been, uh, we've been doing testing. We've got a water testing program. Um, we approached the Stock Rapids Sportsman's Club a few years ago to see if they'd be willing to help pay for some of those costs. And, uh, they were, so we were going out testing. Um, it's varied either, uh, once a month or every two weeks. Uh, this year we're in a two week, uh, rotation. And also the MPCA, um, uh, added a site down Little Rock Creek at the County Road 12 Bridge.
Okay.
So we are doing some, uh, some, uh, water testing and, uh, also measuring flow. The goal of that is, uh, to be able to start doing, detecting trends in the streams, uh, the, you know, the water quality trends in the streams, just like I showed you with the lake. It takes several years of, of doing that to have enough data for it to meet, um, data quality specifications. It's a little bit challenging. I guess I would say when you're pulling water samples and then trying to detect that commissioner pop because of the variation in weather patterns over periods of time, you need a pretty robust data set. But we, uh, we have dedicated, uh, time. And actually this year, uh, some of our, uh, local funding as well. It was, um, with COVID, it was really challenging for the, some of the sportsman's clubs to raise funds.
Right.
You know, their fundraising was, uh, really cut short last year. So actually for 2021, we're doing it out of our own general fund, just to keep that going.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jerry, just, I want to expand a little bit on equip. So, um, do you have plenty of dollars available in equip? Are people using it up? How are you seeing this going forward?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, equip is a, equip program has changed a lot. The, um, the number of people and the dollars being requested in Minnesota has increased. I want to say it's exponentially over the last few years. In 2020, about twenty percent of the applicants got funded. State, if you look at statewide, now Benton County, we did much, much, much better. Um, 2021 is going to be an extremely competitive year. And, um, the way that they're doing their, uh, ranking probably isn't going to bode quite as well for Benton County for, for 2021. We'll find out here in the next week or two. But, uh, yeah, it's a very competitive program.
So more, plenty of applicants, that's not an issue at all?
Applicants is not an issue, yeah. We're, we're probably going to fund maybe, you know, a quarter, quarter of the applicants this year.
Okay.
So we have a lot of people, uh, looking to do conservation work. Luckily we do very well with, um, our competitive grants, uh, at the state level and are able to fill some of the gap there. But equip is a very important program for us.
Sure, thank you.
We wish we could continue that, uh, the pace we were at before with, you know, the majority of people getting funded, but it really has become competitive.
Okay. Anybody else? I just have a comment that, um, if you work with, you know, part of them, why there's more applicants for Equip is because of the staff and the quality of work that they do and, and how they come out and proceed when you're looking at doing a program for that. And I, like one more comment, Jerry, there's a state bill, a bill before the legislature about secure funding. Have you heard where that's going? I know from the AMC environment, uh, committee, there's not a lot of support from that group for this bill.
Yeah, there's, um, I was gone all, uh, last week on vacation, so I'm just catching up with things. I saw an email this morning. Um, there's separate bills in the House and Senate that I think they're ready to, to be negotiated now, uh, at the committee level, I believe. Um, I think it's the House bill. Yeah, I think the House bill is the one that you're referring to. Um, they're different, I, I guess I'll say they're different bills. We like the Senate bill better than the House bill, which is the bill that does not have the, um, there's a bill that's looking to provide levy authority for SWCDs. And then, um, there's another one that's got, where you could add twenty-five percent fee on to tran- uh, real estate transactions. And, you know, we're not really in favor of, of, uh, those bills are not, they're not our preference. We like the relationship we built with Benton County. We feel like we're on the same page. You know, we feel like, uh, things are getting done, uh, very well. We feel like this, the funding, uh, at the local level, we like, we like how things have gone in the past. Um, so, you know, we like to, we'd like to keep things the way they have been. But with that said, reliable funding for soil and water districts is a major problem. And it's something we've been, uh, trying to advocate for, for years at the legislature. Um, if you're not familiar with funding of soil and water districts, uh, a big chunk of our funding comes from the Clean Water Land and Legacy Act. It's called the District Capacity Grant. And, uh, uh, the Clean Water Land Legacy Funds are administered on a biannual, um, method. Uh, most of the other, uh, dedicated funding is annual, but that's biannual. So what that means is every two years, we're going back to the legislature to, uh, request, uh, funding for a big chunk of the soil and water districts. It's about a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars that we get, uh, that we use for operating expenses. So it, it's, that's probably why those bills come up pretty much every year is because there's no reliable source of funding from the state level.
Okay.
We, we think our partnership with Benton County has been great and we feel, you know, pretty solid with our county funding as far as reliability, so.
Um, the, the part, you know, with the twenty-five percent or whatever it was onto the transactions, that was pulled, I believe, because it had, it, they tied it to the clean water legacy money that if your county didn't do it, you were going to get, you weren't going to get that money. And I believe that part of the bill was pulled, I keep watching on it. And I'll, I'll just, uh, reiterate that, um, from the commissioners that I see across the state on the environmental and natural resource, if the county has a good relationship with your SWCD, I think the counties that are pushing this are the counties that the relationship ain't as good and they're looking for funding so they don't have to go to their county board to get that funding. But, you know, our relationship is so good with you and I just commend your office on the work you do, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First, Jerry, I don't think you need to be, uh, I think you followed, uh, Sheriff Heck very well.
Oh, thank you.
Great update. With that said, we look back on 2020. What are your goals for 2021 or what, if, if the money's there, what are maybe a couple of your projects that you'd look to do this year?
Yeah, well, 2021, you know, um, we just had as well over a million dollars in, uh, uh, equip applications in our county. It's probably closer to two, two and a half million. Um, and I'll be honest, I don't, I don't think those are going to fare very well. So at our next board meeting, um, which will be next week, um, or potentially the May board meeting, we'll be talking about how to allocate our state, state funds. We've got some, um, funds dedicated for projects in the Elk River watershed. And then, uh, we still have some funds left over for the Little Rock Lake watershed. And we'll have to decide, um, those are sort of meant to be utilized over a two-year time period. And we'll have to decide, but I sort of feel like the board is going to want to lean towards getting those projects moving this year. And they put a lot on my shoulders to write grants with the expectations that, you know, we get the grant funding, which we do most years. So, yeah, I think it's, I sort of feel like that's where, uh, this construction season is going to go. So I see quite a few erosion control projects moving forward again. And, uh, probably the other thing is, uh, we've got a big, we had a big project planned for, um, within the city of St. Cloud. When COVID hit, um, it's with the private, it's mostly with the private landowner. Uh, and when COVID hit, you know, that kind of, um, made a lot of changes to the business. So we're looking to move that project to another location. I'm being pretty vague here because it's two or three sites, so I'm not really sure exactly where it's going to be. But, yeah, we're looking at probably another underground, uh, regional treatment, uh, little pod there in St. Cloud and a couple more, uh, sump, sumps. So that'll be, it'll be important to keep that going too, because there's a clock on that grant.
Okay. One final question I have is tour practice going to be in person or virtual this year?
If I don't have to promise, I'd say in person. We really want to do in person.
So do I, but I don't know about the rest of the board.
We, uh, we came close to doing it in person last year with, you know, a bus and only having, you know, just fifteen people on it or whatever, but it just ended up being not practical at the end with the restrictions, so.
I've had people ask me from Lake Association to different people that, you know, I think Soil and Water is going to have this tour practice because they enjoy it more. And I think it's good to get out and, and educate some of the people that are maybe not, um, real familiar with, you know, they get on a board or get something like that, so.
Yeah, we had, uh, we had Zoom meetings with our legislators two weeks ago. And, uh, three of them said, please have your tour. So I thought that was pretty telling too, so. If, if it's possible, we'll, we'll have a live tour this year. There's a lot to see.
Mr. Chair, if I could too, Jerry, I'd like to expand on Commissioner Pinsky's. I, a lot of great information here. I, I read it through three, four times and came up with different stuff every time because it's, obviously there's so much information there to try to grasp at once. But appreciate all the effort and there's a lot of good information, so thank you.
Well, thanks.
Mr. Chair, one follow up.
Yep.
Um, have you ever looked at, uh, maybe, uh, going with a outside agency to help write grants? I know you had said a lot of the grants are put on your shoulders.
Um, the answer is no, because we've been so successful. Um, I guess to toot my own horn a little bit, I had seven or, seven or eight years in a row, a hundred percent success. And, uh, you know, I can't probably meet that with a grant writer. It's ti- it's a time consuming project initiative. I start writing, I don't start writing the proposals, but I start organizing stuff in May for submissions that are typically mid-August. Um, you know, not full-time or anything like that, but I start organizing things usually in May. So it, it is a lot of work, but we've been so successful that, uh, um, my board has, uh, asked me to start involving some of the other staff just to, you know, uh, if something happens and not able to write grants, we need to, you know, make sure we've got, uh, their staff that are qualified and well-versed. And we, we have done that a little bit too, but, uh, yeah, I guess we've just been too successful.
Well, great job. We thank you for your support.
Yeah.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good to that. At this time, we're going to recess the county board and turn it over to Commissioner Heinem for Human Services.
We'll call the Human Services Board to order. Bob, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
I do not.
Good.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, we've got two items on it. Anyone, want any of them pulled?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Bob, got anything else to add?
I'm going to get you guys back on track. I'm here for you. Any questions? That's it.
Anybody?
Any, any questions for Bob?
I guess, so we're ramping up for our assistant deputy director position.
Well, we're still, oh, five or six weeks away, but I, she's been participating on Thursday morning calls. And, uh, we're, we're working on right now reopening and our mobile task force. Those are the two task force we have going. So she's, uh, helping out with those as well, so.
I think it's either, is it May 10th is your start date, I believe?
Yes.
May 10th, yeah.
We're, we're excited to get going, that's for sure.
Um, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, sorry. Uh, Bob, just to follow up from our call the other day, if you had an opportunity to have a discussion with employee that, you know, we talked about different positioning and that type of thing, how is that process going?
No, actually after talking at our meeting last Thursday, we decided we were going to wait until after the board meeting here. Just to make it official. And at that point in time, I know he's responded back that we're going to talk about it. And I'm actually going to, uh, per Monte's suggestion, bring Zingtree in for a demonstration. I, I want to see what they're capable of doing as well. So I've asked Monte and I suppose it's something that, uh, we've talked about, whether we want to bring a, a short demonstration to the board here so you can understand what Zingtree is about. I don't fully understand it. I understand the concept and so forth, but I'd love to see a, an actual demonstration of how I want to go from this to training. So that's the piece I'd like to see, so if you're interested in doing so.
I, I would have to agree, we should probably see that. To get a better understanding of how it's all going to work.
I think so too.
I, I agree, it's going to work.
Yeah.
We just need to know how.
How.
Yes. Yes, if you can think it, you can do it.
Technology, right? Anything else for Bob? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
adjourned, turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Um, at this point, is Chris available?
There he is.
Oh, he's here. I thought he was going to be virtual.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
In person, so, um, if you'll just allow me one moment here. I always like to bring things up on the screen. I think it's easier for everybody to see. Um, the first item I have for you is, um, regards to an entrance permit, uh, that we received. And I need to make sure that I am sharing my screen with everybody so everybody can see this. Okay, so here's a map of the location. We received, uh, an entrance permit, uh, for this parcel right here. And at this point, staff has denied the permit, uh, on two grounds. And this is, this is due to our access and spacing policy that we have that was adopted by the county board back in, in 2009. We've denied it on two grounds. And the first, uh, reason, it says in our policy, and I'll bring that up now, uh, found on page two, section two, A8, uh, only one access per property slash parcel will be allowed. Um, sometimes this is modified for large parcels due to physical land features, such as woods and streams that divide the property. And we'll kind of expand on that in a minute. And then the second condition in the policy violated is found in section two, B, number two, uh, minor arterial roadways and major collectors with a current ADT of excess of a thousand ADT, the spacing needs to be a minimum of four hundred and eighty feet apart. So let's go back and look at, uh, the parcel in question. Here's another map. Uh, it is currently one, uh, parcel. Uh, it's an eighty acre parcel. This is forty acres of frontage right here. There is an access onto the parcel right now. So that's why the first condition, it was denied. There's, there's an access to the parcel, uh, right now. Um, nothing says that we have to grant, uh, a second access to the, the, the parcel. And the second condition, uh, this, we really believe that this has over a thousand vehicles a day. Traffic has doubled in ten years on County Road 78, all the way up to the Morrison County line. The spacing required would need to be four hundred and eighty feet. Um, uh, due to other existing driveways with this one here, we could not grant, we don't have not the spacing, um, to fit in another driveway and still meet that four hundred and eighty feet. Another concern, we get this request from, uh, the wetland, uh, folks is, um, there are wetlands on the parcel as well. And so that's another concern that makes this a challenging site for, for us and, um, the owner. This is just a natural, national wetland inventory map. It's not hard setting fast. If any development has to occur, even if our road construction project, we have to hire a wetland delineator to find the actual limits. All this does is All this does is does indicate that there is a strong possibility of wetlands on the parcel, and I think that, that's what complicates this issue as well, is that you're kind of limited to where you could put a driveway and avoid impacting wetlands. I do believe the applicants are here, if you wish to hear from them at this time, but those are the two main reasons why at a staff level, following our policy, we did not grant the entrance permit for an additional entrance onto this parcel. So what's the board's wishes? They want, welcome to listen to the applicant this time, or I'd be happy to answer questions that?
You got a question for?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, Chris, the parcel to the, the south, that approach, how far is that approach to the existing approach on the property right now?
Ah, yes. Mark, do you recall? From the edge of the property line, I know we have a good idea of that, that's.
Are you asking from this entrance or from?
Yes, from, from that entrance to the south entrance.
To that, that distance?
Yep.
I would, I, that's a little beacon, but it looks like that's, I mean, that's, we're looking probably upwards of eight hundred feet away from the existing entrance here to this existing entrance. You can see my cursor on the screen down here.
So, so from their entrance to the entrance to the north, how far is that apart?
From this entrance?
Uh, no, go up to the lan, yep, that entrance to the north, right there.
Um.
Little further.
To the other driveway, yeah.
How far is that distance?
Um, it is, that should be, this is four hundred feet. If I can bring a beacon, I could measure it, but it's, it's, it's at least, it looks like five hundred feet. This is four hundred foot scale.
So, would it be safe to say, though, that the existing driveways along this side of the roadway do meet the spacing policy? I think we feel confident in that, that as today, they do meet the policy for spacing requirements.
So, so most, so both driveways, one on the south and one on the north, to the center, are above and beyond four hundred and eighty feet then?
I feel confident in saying that, yeah, without actually effectively measuring it, so.
Okay.
The problem is trying to fit another one in between.
My, my, my question is this, so the only, the only approach that's in question would be the existing driveway or field road, whatever you wanna call it, right? That, that would be the one that we're infringing on, the less than four hundred and eighty feet.
The proposed.
Yeah, if the proposal was approved, we would be infringing on the, not the, not the driveway to the south or the driveway to the north, just that field approach, right?
It'd be a new entrance.
New entrance, okay. So we, we wouldn't be adding a field, I mean, we wouldn't be adding, it's hard to, you know, it's just a field approach as of now.
Current, currently, that one right now, existing, it meets our current policy. It's that one that we can question.
Mr. Chair, Chris, if I could, this, to me, seems like a good example of our right-of-way ordinance need in the future versus this policy stuff.
That's, yeah, that's a big difference. So right now, we're operating on policies, and the policy that was adopted from, you know, back in two thousand and nine, kind of outlined this, this kind of appeal procedure that, that we're in now, and, and, that's what says, you know, appeals should be made in writing to the county engineer, which the applicant did, within fifteen days. They, they met that. And then it's a little bit vague, shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners within thirty days, so that's where we are today. We're within thirty days. So this isn't an ordinance. A lot of the other ordinances that you may be familiar with the county, there's, it goes to a Board of Adjustment to hear all the facts and, and make a ruling there. We don't, we don't have that as clearly defined when you're operating on a policy, so.
Okay.
Policies do allow for some flexibility, but when, when you need, when you get into tough situations, there's not always a lot of guidance either on how to, how to rule. That would be the downside.
Beth?
Yes, I have a question. On the other side of the road, where are the entryways over there?
Let's see if I have a, where's the best map for that? So, yeah, we do have, yeah, on this, you can kind of see, there's an entrance here, 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 here. I do not know the spacing of those. A lot of those were existing driveways. They existed even prior to the road reconstruction, five, six years ago, on County Road seventy-eight.
Another question.
Go ahead, Beth.
How far is the entrance that is requesting from the one that's across the road right there?
So, okay, so let's, we'll go back to the applicant. So they were requesting somewhere, I believe, in the proximity lining up with the driveway across the road, which in some cases, we, we like to do that. That kind of puts them almost building a driveway in a wetland then at that point, so that's, that complicates things. We're, we, we get sometimes asked by the regulatory authorities not to approve entrances that would force a landowner into building in a wetland, and I don't think the, the landowners typically wanna do that, do that either, so.
I think it goes back to Commissioner Johnson that, you know, we don't really have, we don't have no say from Soil and Water or Department of Development on the wetlands. This is just, your map kind of says it's a possible wetland, it doesn't say it. I, I know the area a little bit, and it is wet, wetlands, and if you were looking to make a, you know, get a clarification, it would probably be wetlands in my book.
Yeah.
From what I know, but I'm no expert, eh?
These, when you see these maps, we're told not to use that, oh, that's, that's all the farther that wetland goes. You need to have a wetland delineation performed, and that involves an individual going out there and actually looking at the soil and the plant types and the evidence of water and saying, yeah, this is wetland and that's not, and actually defining where that line is. That's usually required for any kind of development or construction happens in the proximity.
I have one more question. Mr. Hanson, where are you suggesting that you would like to go in there?
We'll get to that when we ask questions, Beth, from the, from the people in the audience. So you got anything else for us before we move to the applicant?
No, I just, yeah, we're just, at a staff level, we're just operating, trying to stay consistent with our policy, and, yeah, those are the two grounds that we, we denied the permit on at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Chris, I wanna get back to the, we have denied these before, correct?
We, yeah, we've denied permits before. We tried to work with the applicant in most cases, and a lot of times, that involves maybe placing a driveway entrance where the landowner didn't originally anticipate it. Another thing our policy does say is that we should look for opportunities to share driveways. That's something that we do quite often, is try to find where we can share driveways on a property line. We do know that this road, we have sixty feet of right-of-way, so from the edge of the roadway, sixty feet, you could, you could build a shared driveway, and by the time you get to that sixty-foot right-of-way line, you could split it off, and everybody's on their own individual property at that time, so you don't have to do that. We look for opportunities like that to share driveways and move them around to meet spacing, avoid wetlands, and things like that. I will say, our policy, when, when I mentioned large parcels that are divided by a land feature, you know, if this was a wetland that continued through the whole parcel and you're kind of divided north and south, we would take that into consideration. Just this map indicated to us that, well, okay, you're right, you got wetlands up against the road frontage, but there may be opportunities behind the wetland that you're not infringing or impacting the wetland and still access the parcel. That's the kind of we look at. Parallel to the frontage, are you, are you splitting your parcel? Likewise, if there's streams, things like that, we don't expect people have to build bridges. We will take that into consideration, that will grant an additional access, because you got a natural feature that naturally splits your property.
Mr. Chair, maybe before you get into calling the applicant up, Chris, or Mark, if we could have you pull Beacon up, I'd like to see the actual distances if we could, so everybody's on the same page of, instead of guessing where these things are at, if we can get Beacon to give us a, a pretty close idea of footage.
All right, let's, let's try this. Here. Try and remember the best way to do it. Obviously, on my computer, I have this bookmark, so I go directly to it, so. Here we go. This looks like the parcel in question, I believe so. We'll use the measurement tool here from feet. Looks like from this entrance to here, we're six hundred and thirty-two, six hundred and thirty-three feet approximately. We'll swing around and go to the south. Looks like we're about nine hundred and forty feet, give or take.
Chris, can you go, how far to the property line, I guess would be my question I've had?
To this property line, we're seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and eighty feet.
Okay. How far from the property line to that bottom driveway? To the south?
Let's do this one.
Right there, yeah.
And I'm just trying to measure it along the center line of the road.
Right.
That's kind of what we get. So we're at a hundred and fifty, seven hundred and sixty feet or so?
Mr. Chair, and Chris, just so I'm clear, on your four hundred and eighty feet of distance, is that only needed on the side of the proposed entrance? Does the opposite side of the road matter?
We look at the same size, side of the road. So that's where they had proposed, I think with the application actually came in, was, you know, lining up here, that's pretty close to this, this driveway.
Okay.
I think the, the concern is that, I was gonna bring up that, if I can, the wetland.
Yeah, I, I had spoke to Mark McNamara, he said somewhere, last week, he was just going off, based upon this and looking at contours, he was saying somewhere upwards of, like around between three hundred and three twenty-five, you would think, between the south entrance, that if you go any further north than that, three hundred feet or three hundred and twenty-five feet, it could be, it could be impacting wetlands at that point.
Which is a good point. We do have a lower standard on lower-volume roadways, that the minimum spacing is three hundred and thirty feet, so even looking at opportunities there, we'd be somewhat violating that as well.
So at this, this point in time, we'll ask the applicant to come up and state his name, address, and his reasons for wanting this.
Hi, Jeff Hanson, eighty-six sixty, First Avenue Northeast, Rice is where I live at now, and I would like to split off a twenty-acre parcel from this eighty to build a house, and then to have the driveway on my twenty acres as a whole, and not have to go around, all the way around, around the field, around the wetland, to have my driveway, and then have an easement on property that I don't own. I mean, the family owns that eighty acres, but I wanna split off twenty for myself. So I guess, I would hope that I could get an approval, you know, I don't care exactly how far, but maybe right next to the wetland, and, and I, yes, I'm not at the four eighty number, but, I mean, that road, we did upgrade it seven years ago, but most areas in the county is three hundred and thirty feet, and we upgraded that road, but then there's still stop signs on it, so people still have to stop every two miles. I mean, it's not like it's, and you could only go fifty-five miles an hour, so there's a lot of things that, yes, it's a beautiful road, it's a wide road, it's got big ditches you can see, you know, for cars coming out. I understand the, the reasons why we have these, but again, it's, there's other things that I hopefully would be allowed to have a driveway there. Somewhere between the three, three thirty and, and the edge of the wetlands.
Mr. Chair. So, sir, you, I think under your application, you said four hundred and forty feet, is where you wanted your, your new driveway?
Well, I mean, if I had to, anywhere that would keep me out of the wetland. I mean, I haven't had it delineated, and I'm happy to do that, so we have the most spacing for everybody to be okay with it, 'cause that, that driveway across the road, I think that is about four eighty, you know, and obviously, across the road, there's wetlands there, so I'm not gonna be allowed probably by your wetland people to do that, so I'm, I'm o, I'm just, anywhere that is okay with, out of the wetland.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, Chris, if we went from the property line or from the, the south driveway, all the way up to just underneath that pink area, what would that be?
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, while you're doing that, Commissioner Kapinski is, you said you have a sixty-foot right-of-way off of that center line, correct?
Correct.
So that, if the, if the driveway went in where you just pointed there off of seventy-eight, it certainly can come in and then head south on his property, could it not?
I suppose. It comes down to, is, is the wetland following this line? Does it extend a little bit farther? Is, is WACA, Wetland Conservation Act, is that gonna be forgiving and allow some flexibility here? You're right, that's four thirty-seven, this is not the most accurate, so if we say four forty, are we gonna be touching wetlands? I was hoping that, here we go, that this, oh, right-of-way tab is marked. Yeah, we have a, on our GIS, there is a layer that shows the width of the, the right-of-way, so I'm suspecting that they got some kind of map from our right-of-way map, that's why that's a straight line. Wetlands aren't normally straight lines like that. That might correspond with our right-of-way.
Mr. Chair, i, if it's okay with Jeff, Chris, could you potentially show us where the twenty-acre mark would be? If he wants to split off twenty acres, I assume you're going to run that, in this case, would be east and west, right? Twenty acres on the bottom of this parcel? All the way to the, all the way to the back property line?
No, nobody. I think this is, he shared something like this in his application, so, which makes sense, about if eighty acre, a quarter of it, that's maybe approximate to where he drew in.
Yeah, and it has been surveyed, and the survey stakes are there for it to be split off like that. And then that box is where I want it.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry I missed the, the writing in there of that. Thank you.
Okay.
If we, you know, a lot of times, we, we get, we work pretty close with Department of Development, when they have applications for administrative land splits, that's one of the things that's required, is they come to us and seek access approval. If we saw an administrative land split application, we'd probably almost look at this and say, well, there's a driveway proximity. We may be, according to our policy, directed to see if, well, can we share, can we maybe adjust some lines a little bit to share the existing driveway? I think the issue here is, though, that this wetland potentially goes up here, you couldn't take this driveway straight. You'd be forced to sharing an access and still going back north of the wetland. But usually, when administrative land splits are happening, it's all, it's a common owner that's wanting to split off part of their own property, and then you can, you can work with shared accesses at points. And I think that's something that we would look at, too, if this is, if we'd received an administrative land split application, we would encourage the applicant to look at sharing an existing driveway, since you're close to the property line at that point anyways.
Chris, would you go back to that wetland? And pull it, pull it down, so we can see the far north?
I'm trying to get that off.
If, I got, I got a question for the applicant. If that road didn't have to go north, you know, the existing driveway, would that be, if that was an option, would that be acceptable to keep it there? I mean, I can, I can see your point, you know, you, you, you turn in, and you gotta go north, and then you're gonna have to come back around, you know, almost make like a horseshoe type to get to your house.
I guess I'm not understanding, but if you're asking, if, as soon as I get off the right-of-way, if I turn right-of-way to the left?
Well, no, if, if you use the existing road that's there right now, you know?
Or the field approach?
Yeah, the field approach. If that would go straight in, instead of, if that was a possibility, would that be?
Well, it would be fine, but the problem is, is wetland there, and I'm.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Yeah, I'd be, I'm in the same boat.
So we're dealing with a wetland problem.
I think either way, we're dealing with a wetland problem.
Correct. Either way, he's gotta go around the wetland.
Right.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Did you want to go that angle down to go in there? Did you want to go that angle down to go in there, or do you want to use the lower property line to go around?
I, I'm okay, I'm, again, I'm just trying to keep everybody, be okay with everybody. I'm okay to, as soon as I get off, as far as you, I need to be north, I'm okay to turn, get off the right of way and, and go south right away. So I stay out of the wetland as much as possible and then, you know, kind of go along halfway between that blue and the, something, and the property line. That's where my driveway would, would in essence go.
So that would be pretty close to the other ones, so there'd be only a place where people are slow, slowing down in one area.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, in essence, the driveway across the road, exactly.
From, I think if we, if we go to the south of the wetlands in there and your road goes north, we're gonna have a lot of pushback from that neighbor that's in there. I don't think that's a possibility. Mr. Whipler had called me on this, and I don't think that he, he's gonna say that we need to enforce the four eighty then because of where that road. And I, I kind of agree with him because you're gonna be turning and I don't know how dense that woods is or not. And coming past his, the backside of his house, quite frankly, quite close. So I guess, you know, I don't know.
What is that? What, what is the, um, footage from the, the blue wetland to the border? That's gotta only be probably what, fifty feet, sixty feet?
I was saying about a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, okay.
Twenty at a road.
If that's where it ends.
Yeah, yeah, we don't know that.
Mr. Chair, you know, wi- without knowing about the wetlands and everything, other than what we're seeing right up on the map, it's really hard to justify making that entrance closer to the south.
Right.
Without impacting on all of that.
Mr. Chair, um, I'm a little bit confused, and maybe Jeff can clarify this for me, but if you were to receive the okay to put that entrance in basically across the road from the, the people on the east side of seventy-eight, you're still looking at delineating wetland area regardless.
And that's fine.
Okay.
I- i- if, if, if I'm given the approval from Mark McNamara, I'm okay with that. We have a wetland bank. If I have to do, you know, wetland banking, but it has to be okay with him too, you know, I, you know, I'm okay with buying credits, you know? That's okay with me.
So I guess in the process here, Chris, maybe you could help me out with this, is, is that something that would be done first? I mean, do we have the cart before the horse here in regards to getting his wetland delineation done and seeing if that's even a possibility? Before we, I mean, for us to say, yeah, go ahead and do it, or no, you can't do it, based on what? We don't have a delineation done.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question, and, um, I understand the landowner's perspective. It's almost like whether we're putting the cart before the horse, sometimes you don't want to buy a cart until you have a horse. And so I can see his perspective. Are we gonna approve an entrance? Does he want us, you know, go with the expense of having a delineation if we're not gonna approve an entrance anyways? So I want to go back to, and we measure the distance between these two. Okay, so we got nine hundred and thirty-some feet, so. If we were to line it up here, we got four hundred and eighty. We're close, so, yeah, I was just saying, if we, if we put the additional driveway in, do we still have the spacing in between the next existing driveway? We'd be, we'd be really close, so, um. Is, that's the thing, as one parcel, though, we'd still, still be violating our, our policy if it's one parcel. We've just granted an additional access. Uh, if it gets split off, I guess it's a.
Different story if it's split, right? I guess from my standpoint, I'd like to see it go through some kind of wetland deal. Maybe there's a chance we go across from the, the east side of the approaching. If they got wetland credits, I know that the Hansons have been really great at creating wetlands, and they've had help, you know? They've asked for different things when I was on the town board to create that and that. If you could go, maybe they'll let them go right straight through the wetlands, you know, putting a road through there. I would be a little bit cautious on approving it if that road's gonna turn and go south.
Correct.
I would have some, cause we'll get some pushback. Go ahead, Jeff.
How far away would you want me to be? So, cause again, you know, he built right on the property line. I mean, he's, he's right on our property line. And I understand you're trying to keep him happy because he's there, and I'm okay with that. So as far as you want me to be with my driveway, I'll, I'll be. I mean, I, I'll, I'll slip right along as far away from his, of the property line, you know? I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chair.
If that's a concern.
Mr. Chair, and you, you know the area, but I'm looking at the aerial here. Uh, Commissioner Kapinski asked for the footage. There's a hundred and twenty feet there from the property line, and it looks like it's all wooded. So the concern about the driveway being too close to the house, that he's gonna see it, or what's, what's the concern?
Yeah, I would, that's, that's what I, what I hear is that, you know, and if you go, if the driveway's gonna go make a V down in there someplace, I don't think Mr. Whipler bought that property, you know, to see car lights and stuff like that, I think is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
So it'd be better to have it up higher than right on the property line there? And have it in the woods?
So what, what, is, any other comments from the Hansons?
I, I would like, I want to address this property line issue.
My name is Lee Hanson, I'm Jeff and Craig's dad. I, I think it's completely improper for you to say that, uh, we can't impact his house when he built his house right on the line and allow that to impact what we do on our land. That's just plain wrong.
So he evidently had, went to the Department of Development, though, so it must have been.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it was improper, but it's still improper to impact what we can do on our land simply because he built right up to the property line. And, I mean, we know Mr. Whipler and we don't want to have an issue with him. But he should not be involved in any capacity in telling us what we can do with our land.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
His only issue was trying to stay with the four hundred and eighty square feet.
Yeah.
I mean, that four hundred and eighty feet, that was his issue.
And, Mr. Chair, if I.
Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Okay.
Okay, with this property that you're gonna, are you gonna be purchasing this for your own? So you're gonna have an own spot that's gonna be yours, but it's gonna be in that area, so it's gonna be a different property anyway.
For me, I just wanna.
So he'd be a different property owner other than the other access, and that's not his anyway.
So if, Chris, if this property was the, was split, the twenty, twenty acres, Jeff, is that what you said?
Yes.
If that twenty acres and where that came about, what would, what would the recommendations from the Department of, the Highway Department be? To share that north exit entrance, or would you have to grant him a different one then?
I think we would, we would prefer to share when, when, when you got a driveway that close to the property line.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I, I understand, uh, Mr. Hanson's concerns with what, dictating what they do in their property. And I think we had the same concerns. If we were to approve an entrance any closer, then that's the Highway Department kind of directing that. Um, and we're violating our policy, and that would be something for us difficult to defend. If we violated our, you know, written and adopted policy and there's concerns from adjacent landowners, I, I, I have some concerns about our liability with that. But if we stick to our policy and whatever they do on, as long as they're within the Benton County Development Code, our Highway Department doesn't have any issues with what they do on their property. I just had concerns, if we violated our own policy and then there was concerns with development and those kind of things, we wouldn't have a leg to stand on, so.
All right. Mr. Chair, so Chris, clarify this for me. So if there was consensus, some consensus or a compromise from the board with the property owners to allow an entrance, which would be for all practical purposes, the four hundred and eighty feet would match up with the property that's on the east side of seventy-eight? If he was to come in there, the onus is on the property owner to get the wetland delineation done, which he's gonna need to do. And then back to their rights of being able to put that driveway wherever they would like to on their property. Are you saying doing that process would be completely against the policy? If, if this board was to allow an entrance directly west of the existing east entrance on seventy-eight, the onus is on the property owner for the wetland delineation to get that driveway put wherever he needs to put it on his property. Would that be completely violating the policy that's been adopted?
It m- may, and so when we look at this, we're kind of looking at a snapshot at time. So right now, we're looking at one parcel that has an existing entrance on it, that, that for all intents and purposes appears to serve a majority of the parcel.
Okay.
So without seeing anything different, that it's a separate parcel or even the administrative land split application, we're still analyzing it as one parcel, and our policy says that, you know, one parcel or one axis per parcel.
Okay, so let me fast forward a little bit. The Hansons come in, do an administrative land split application.
Yeah.
Wetland delineation, comes to your office, you see that now. Where does that set us with policy?
I think it does change the, the story, uh, a bit, cause then we're, we're looking at the creation of a new, new parcel. And does that new parcel have reasonable access? In most cases, a shared access is, is reasonable, um, sometimes it's not.
So we're back to cart in front of the horse.
Right, um, so if, if you want a shared access, is there a parameter of number of feet from the property line, or does it have to be on the property line? How does that, how does that work in the past?
We typically, yes, split it on the parcel line, and we've allowed additional, uh, widths of driveways above our standard because we, we acknowledge it's being shared and used by multiple parcels. A- and the idea is that, you know, at this sixty-foot line here, then it splits. Ideally, there's a property iron right there on that, at sixty feet, that splits the parcels. And so your driveway, as you construct it, avoids that property iron, so everybody's on their own individual parcel. There has been cases where adjacent landowners have gotten ingress and egress easements, uh, because couldn't make the driveways work. And, and, um, they get an easement from the adjacent donor to cross the property line to get into the parcel.
Mr. Chair, well, with the, with the drawing that Mr. Hanson gave, his north proposed twenty acre line does not touch that driveway.
Right.
A- as drawn, it doesn't appear to do that, yeah. I think theoretically, in an administrative land split application, there needs to be a certified.
Certified survey.
Survey.
And I do have that, and it is at, um, Roxanne, waiting for an answer from you guys, because I was put on hold not to do the land split. I have had the survey, the survey is almost identical to what that drawing is. But she said, well, let's just wait till you get approval from the board, and then we'll go ahead with the land split. So that is the situation I'm in now.
So the application's pending right now in DOD.
Yeah, and the survey has been done.
Okay, so I don't know as much about, as, as, um, you know, from DOD as Scott does. So is that something that they could disapprove the land split or not approve the land split because it doesn't meet?
Well, I, I would, I would guess one of the criteria, it's a, it's an administrative land split, so it's gonna be done right there at the counter. And so she's gonna have a checklist to see if she's got an entrance or not.
Okay.
I would imagine, and that's kind of, yes, the cart's before the horse, but from their perspective as the property owner, they need to know if they have an, an entrance before they proceed.
Thanks, Scott, for that update. I guess it gets back to some wetland stuff and, and stuff like that, that, uh, you know, and I, you mentioned, or Jared mentioned, the part about have a consensus of where the driveway's gonna be with the parties involved and the Highway Department. I mean, I, I'm not comfortable today probably granting a, a different variance without having a little more knowledge of that wetland. Or if it's possibility to go through the wetland and work with them people.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Jeff or Lee, uh, what's your indication with what's gonna happen with the wetland delineation? I mean, how big of an issue is this gonna be?
I'm, I kind of agree with his colors there. It's pretty accurate where the real wetland is. And in my thinking with knowing Mr. McNamara, you know, he's gonna say, no, you, you need to avoid the wetland. So that's gonna come back to you guys, so he can not allow me to be in the wetland, but you guys allow me to be on the edge of the wetland and, um, and, cause I've already talked to Mark, and that's what he said. He says, I can't let you, you're supposed to avoid the wetland. And then that gives you guys hopefully the ability to grant me the variant, variant, variant because there's a wetland there, and again, it's, you know.
Then we're back to the minus four hundred and eighty feet.
Yeah.
And.
Put us liable for it.
Correct.
And then we're. Mr. Chair, I see Roxanne came in, maybe you wanna ask her if she'd like to address some of this.
You got any, anything you want to address, Roxanne?
That was quick. She's been, she overheard us, I think, on the.
I did. I've been listening on YouTube, and I'm like, should I run down? Should I? I finally decided to come down. So with administrative land splits, like, well, with any split like this, um, we require that the applicant first get approval from the Highway Department because the last thing that our office wants to do is interfere with, um, the Highway Department's access policies. And so that's why I have the survey in my office, the application, and I am simply waiting to find out what, um, what the board or Highway Department chooses to do on access with this. Because again, I don't want to interfere with that, and if we need to not, you know, if we need to deny the application or have boundaries changed, this is the time to do it. And while the person, while the property owner owns all the property, that's the time to work on any sort of easements because you don't have to work with anyone but yourself to grant those easements and accesses.
Mr. Chair, Roxanne, can you speak to the matter of, of the north property line on that survey? Does it come to the existing driveway or not? Do you know, do you know that off the top of your head?
Um, I do not. I should have brought the survey down. I'm not sure if it locates that access or not, but I can go grab the survey.
Okay.
But we have, we've approved splits before that grant, um, an easement, which would benefit this property to use that access to get to it. We, we've gone through quite a few of those recently. And in fact, we changed our development code to allow for access easements in cases like this. We prefer that each property has its own direct access to the public right of way, but we understand there's instances where it just does not work.
Mr. Chair.
Chris, I got a question. Now with Jeff's latest, uh, comment about talking to Mr. McNamara on the wetland and them not being able to go through that, how would that change your view from the Highway Department?
I think this is, and maybe the applicant shares the same fear, I, I, that I have, that the wetland delineation will come back, that it's somewhat maybe larger and south. And the only place to put a driveway would force an entrance that still violates the three hundred and thirty feet or four hundred and eighty feet policy. So that's, I think that's kind of the underlying fear is that putting the cart before the horse, you go ahead and buy the carts, and then you can't afford the horse because it's still gonna be in violation of the written policy, even trying to use a lower standard at the three hundred and thirty feet. I think that's the underlying fear I have is the, the county highway engineer.
Mr. Chair, so Chris or Roxanne can help me with this. With the Rox, with the Rox, with the wetland area, um, he talked about banking that. So if the wetland delineation does come up to the right of way, sixty feet from the center line, is he able, does that mean you absolutely cannot go through there, or can you bank that so that you can use it? How does that work?
So you're talking about on the, with the private property?
So I'm, I, let's go back again to an entrance, yep, right there.
Right there.
Okay, and it's delineated and it's wetland.
Yep.
Does that put the dagger in, or is he have other abilities to continue to a driveway so we're not coming in the south side? Is that, maybe I'm not asking it right, but.
I, I think I understand what you're asking. I honestly don't know what the impact of that'll be. Generally speaking, when you're replacing wetlands, it's two for one. Um, and so depending on specifically that amount of area, I, I, and frankly, the Hansons may know more about that than I do.
Correct.
Okay.
But I could, I could also see if Mark's available.
Jeff, is that something you could speak to as far as wetland banking? I mean, if that's delineated as wetland, does that mean you bank two for one?
Well, again, it comes back to, to, to Mark and then the, the, the tech, technical evaluation panel, they all have to agree. Well, again, it comes back to 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 Mark and then the 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 TEP technical evaluation panel, they all have to agree to what I want to do.
Okay.
It just can't be him. It's it's there's a, there's another group of people.
Okay.
Rox Roxanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mark doesn't do the delineation. There's other companies that do that, right?
Correct. It's it's a private.
It's a private company that would have to determine, you know, just because Mark looked at it and and Grant Mark knows a lot, but doesn't mean that it's set in stone that this is wetlands and there is nothing that could be done.
Well, I'm gonna, those areas are probably wetland.
Okay.
Um, it's just a matter of where those boundaries specifically are. Um, and we take a number of different things into consideration. So if you turn on um the soils layer, this will tell, and click on each one of those, they'll tell you the type of soils that are there and whether they're well drained or not. This area is very poorly drained, which means it's probably holding water. And then when you take into consideration um the contours, you can see that there's a contour here of, I believe it's um eleven fourteen, which is the same level as this wetland. So there's a good possibility that those wetlands may extend all the way down this far. Um, so if you take into consideration a few of those other factors. Um, so what happens is the delineation is completed by a professional. That report comes in to Mark and then he sends that out to his TEP committee, um, the technical advisory panel. We've got Bowser on their SWCD, DNR and Mark. They all review these and oh, and the Corps of Engineers. And so they take a look at this and it's a joint effort to to look at what they have there and the impact um of their request.
Mr. Chair, so at that point in time, when it goes to them, they can deny it right there.
They could.
With 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 a road or anything going through there, they can just say, no, ain't going to happen. At that point in time, our hands are tied then. Then we would have to go further north.
Mr. Chair, at this point, I don't feel comfortable going either way on this. There's just too much to be figured out, I think, at this point. And I and I understand the Hanson's problem too. It costs money to do that and it's uh buying the the cart before they have everything, so. I but we're kind of stuck because I think Commissioner Heinen said it best, we could rule and we could be overstepping our bounds.
Any other comments?
There's only one easy solution and that's what the Hanson's don't want to do.
Well, and I, you know, from the Hanson standpoint, I think there's very few people in the county that got as much knowledge about the wetlands as they do.
I would think they should have the option to be able to have it checked out to see if they can use that lower area for a road.
Mr. Chair, um, Jeff, what what how big a process is it to get this delineated and get that answer first before you move through on the entrance? I mean, that seems to be the big hole up.
Right. I mean, I can move ahead with my, you know, building my house, you know, and and hope that I can work through this process and get approval from you guys to put my driveway, you know, on the southern end, you know. Will you guys be okay with, you know, if I go through that process and 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 say it's like where the the delineation is where the pink is, and again, it's just, I know it's before I get an answer, but if they have, if they delineated kind of where the pink is, will you guys approve it at that time?
Mr. Chair, I will approve it if it's four hundred and eighty feet from Paul Whipler's driveway approach.
So not at.
Not any less. You're gonna, once, I think what you're gonna find out when you go through all the, all of that work, they're gonna want your approach pretty close to the property line between you and Whipler. With from from what I'm seeing anyway, when Roxanne blew that stuff.
Correct. Okay.
I would agree. We got to stay in that four hundred and eighty foot.
Okay, um, I guess the question I have for Jeff is that if you go ahead and build your house and you're unable to get an access, are you okay with sharing that driveway to the north?
Well, I mean, I mean, I have to be, but it kind of scares me when two people are saying they're not going to budge on the four eighty.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So we've had three other applications in front of us, but we didn't budge on them. Okay, so we maintain that four hundred and eighty feet. We didn't go against our policy. And I personally will not go against our policy right now.
Okay, because in the past, I've I've tried, I had another parcel for five years to get an approach on and I stopped paying real estate taxes on it. He went back to the county. The county had it. They sold the property and allowed a homeowner to to build a house on it. I mean, it, it's like I'm being treated differently than than other people, you know.
And and if we go back to the three other applications that we denied, they'd say the same thing. You know, and and I don't know when this happened, you know, when you turned it back to the county.
Three, four years ago.
You know.
And another person just, they they have, just across the road and a quarter mile to the north, the property there had an eighty acres, had four pro, four approaches. Last fall, the county granted them a fifth approach. I'm just asking for one approach and they they have five. I mean, it just, there's no rhyme or reason to this stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Now, on the other side of the road, there's one, two, three, four properties. Are they not going to be allowed an access to be going to those properties?
Chris, can you speak to that always?
Yeah, Commissioner Slung, this, those were existing accesses. So when we acquired right of way, um, this is back in two thousand nine, maybe two thousand ten timeframe. Um, the county acquired the easement and compensated those landowners for that additional highway easement for right of way. They were not compensated to, what's commonly referred to as taking accesses. At that time, the county made the decision to allow um existing entrances to remain. Um, including the ones that we see here on the west side of the road. And at that time, this one was just a field entrance and since the road was reconstructed, it has become a residential entrance. So um, that's a lot of times what happens. A lot of, when you do a reconstruction project, a lot of times the existing accesses are allowed to remain. If not, it becomes a taking and then as a governmental entity, we would have to compensate them for for removing that access.
Chris, can you go to the north further what Jeff was talking about? I have some, um, there's somebody had built a new home right there on.
Is it here?
Right there, that, there was an existing driveway there and now they put another one to the north. But um them, that, the people that built the new home right there, that was an existing approach. And the county did, the the engine or the highway department did recommend that they move that to the property line to the north. But because it was an existing approach, they went after and said that, you know, we said they didn't have to. Um, and now there's another one. You can kind of see the road going into the field there. Now they've put an approach in there and I'm I'm hoping that the county approved that.
Yeah, you see, there's an existing one. I, this aerial photograph is probably a couple of years old. Oh, it says it's two thousand and twenty.
Well, it was just put in. It was put in right there. There's a road coming right off there. And they put an approach there and I'm assuming that the county approved that.
Yeah, so this was an existing entrance.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe that's correct. We had.
But had that not been an existing entrance, we would have recommended that they go on the property line on that one. The only thing that got them, that got them to keep that entrance was that it was an existing one.
Mr. Chair, if I could, and again, and to keep this from going around and round and Mr. Hanson, I I think that from my, from my perspective, I'm in a little more of a position of a talk about some compromise if you can come back to us and say that there's a potential to even put it there. From my perspective, I'm not hearing that you can even put it there.
Chris, what was the total footage one more time from the the very top driveway? Because we got to go to the middle, correct?
Yeah, we reach our center line to center line usually.
So if we do that, I think, yep, I think we are very close to that four eighty. I mean, give or take a few feet, I wouldn't have a problem. I mean, we're within.
Yeah, I mean, we're twenty-five, thirty feet within, so I guess maybe ideally, if we're nine hundred and fifty feet to the, between existing accesses, we would, I guess, split the difference, try to get as close as we are. We're not going to get a full four hundred and eighty between either one. But if we did split it in the middle.
And seeing that there is an access going the other direction also, it it would just be like there's just another one going the other direction.
I I believe that would be four hundred and eighty feet anyway, correct, Chris? The property from the east to Whipler's?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was four eighty, yeah.
So again, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I mean, to me, it it makes some sense to hear the Hanson's come back and say, we can do this. Because for us to even approve this today, if you can't, if you can't do it, our approval means nothing.
Right, so my fear though, I, will you, will anybody be okay with something less than the four eighty?
From my perspective, I can speak to that. I have some compromise room on the four eighty if you can do it. If you can't do it, it's a moot point.
Okay, well, that's what I need to know.
Because we're close to four, we're.
Right.
We're not at four eighty, we're not at two hundred.
Yeah.
We're close.
Yeah.
But it just seems we've got a cart before the horse here. I'd like to have you come back and appeal that decision based on the fact that you can even do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
I agree with Mr. uh Commissioner Johnson. I'm just afraid that that, we're going to come back and it's going to be right down at the bottom of the property. That's where my concern is, but if we can get it a little bit less than the four eighty, that's doable, then then I'd be, I'd be for it.
And if I, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kapinski, for my clarification, if we can get it close to the four eighty and you come into your property, I don't really care where you put it.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Once you're on your pro, once you're on your property, but nobody's shown me that you can even do this yet. To talk about the four eighty.
Correct.
Right, yeah, I, well, I, that's why I need to get some guidance from you guys is what you will be okay with, or how many people do I need to approve? Is, do I need to get all or what? I mean, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Well, in this case, you'd have to have a majority of it.
Majority, which is three.
Majority, oh, Mr. Chair.
Is there?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I I agree with Commissioner Johnson. Once you get the approach, I personally don't care where that road goes because it's your property. There there's nothing I'm going to say about that, you know, but you got to figure out where to get that approach first. Okay, and if that approach is going to be two hundred feet, three hundred feet, no, I'm not going with it. You know, you got to, you got to prove and show it to us.
Yeah.
You know, to where it approach could be legally.
Mr. Chair, if I could, and just to clarify for Jeff, because I think that's what he's asking, if we can have some consensus, number one, he's got to have some allowance there around the four hundred and eighty foot mark. And then come back and and ask for that appeal to that decision from highway. If if you come back and it's two hundred feet, there's probably not cons, I mean, I'm not going to speak for these members.
I would agree with that.
But I I think that the port and and we'll get some consensus here, but if it's close to the four eighty and it's allowable, I think it's going to get reviewed again by this board to vote on. That's my opinion.
Mm-hmm, that would be mine too.
That's mine.
You know, um, but there's, you know, there, yeah, I agree with, you know, if it's three hundred, I think we're going to have some problems.
We're going to have some issues.
What if it's at the three thirty or four hundred?
Four, I don't.
Not within there.
You know.
Mr. Chair, I'd say let's try to get as close as you can.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that. I'll I'll work with that.
We don't, we don't want to completely shut you down. It's just.
That, I'll work with that.
You know, and again, Jeff, from my perspective, if you come back here at four hundred and fifty feet, I'm probably going to entertain some type of compromise for that. If you come back here at two hundred and forty feet, I'm not interested. That's my perspective.
And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
So let's get your wetland delineate, let's see if you can even do it first.
Okay, thank you guys.
And Mr. Hanson, just just so you know, that this is a compounding effect too, so once we do it for one, it's the next, the next, the next, it starts a, a uh, a downhill snowball.
And that's exactly why I'm going to keep pushing on proposing right away ordinances versus policy.
Right.
Is there, what's the percentage of county roads that are four eighty to three thirty in the county? Just a rough number, is it ten percent of them?
I don't know. We have four hundred and fifty miles of county road that we maintain.
Just a rough guess, because I mean.
Over six thousand driveway entrances currently today. I I don't know.
Is your report next week or?
We we have those numbers and we know the nu, we we know which roads are major collectors, which ones are minor arterials. Um, uh, and we have traffic counts on our roads and stuff, so I just don't know that data off the top of my head.
I I just, I'm trying to, you know, to the old three thirty rule, and again, we got two stop signs on it and, you know, so people can't, they can't speed anyway.
And to Mr. Commissioner Johnson's point, I mean, the policy we're looking at was adopted in two thousand nine. It it's probably dated. We we have a lot more traffic on our road. We have a lot more population in our county from ten years ago too. Um, a lot of things have changed and that, and that's why things change over time and 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 whether like it or not, County Road Seventy-Eight, it extends even to it to the south. It's because I want it becomes Mayhew Lake Road. It's a, it's becoming a major route north and south in our county. It brings in a lot of business and traffic into St. Cloud and in Sauk Rapids. So it does cause us to look at things differently as time progresses.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Monty, I have a question for you, since this seems to be an an action item of some sort, is it appropriate to table this until the Hanson's?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table uh this request for the appeal until the Hanson's can bring back uh information that shows that they can actually install a driveway in this area that we're talking about.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion, otherwise I call the question. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck to you. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Roxanne, for your input. Thank you, Chris.
Um, I don't think I'm done though, am I?
No, you're not.
Um, okay, I believe the next item that I had on the agenda was an agreement. And and I had some consent items that were agreements, but I wanted to talk about this one specifically because it's a little bit different. Um, a different type of agreement than what we typically do. So before you day is what's called a master services agreement. Most of the time, if we use a consultant, it's for a specific project and we contract with them to for designing or engineering work or assistance on a specific project. In the area of county ditches, each county ditch is viewed as its own separate project. So we already had existing agreements with Houston Engineering to do work on County Ditch Six. And then we went out for an RFP, a request for proposals on County Ditch Three because we received a repair petition. Houston Engineering was actually selected to do that engineering work on County Ditch Three based on their experiences, their fees and the quality of work products that they provide. Well, we got already got a repair petition for County Ditch Nine. We have a county, a repair petition for County Ditch Ten. So what this master services agreement would do would allow us to have and kind of an umbrella agreement with Houston Engineering. And then each county ditch would be like a work order or a task order for them. That kind of saves me and our staff from going out and having to get proposals from engineering on each time we get a request for uh ditch work, which I foresee going to keep coming in as as time progresses. So if it pleases the board, I would recommend approving this master services agreement with Houston Engineering that the board would sign. And then as as the county ditch engineers, ditch work comes up, uh, we contract with them for that and do a specific task for that specific ditch. We can do that in accounting wise. We need to keep each ditch system separate in accounting and we can do that through the task order process.
Mr. Chair, so the past board approved to do this because of the price that they were charging us. They were charging us four fifty an acre, is it, or?
Well, that was for the viewers.
That was for the viewers, right.
So this is a different.
This is different.
Different company. So this would be, once the viewers get done with their work and we need to actually move forward with some repair work, I I I would like to move, keep using Houston Engineering to do that engineering work for us and prepare those reports that I bring back to you guys.
Mr. Chair, uh, so the, these numbers have already been bid a couple of times now with the different ditches and everything. And I've used master service agreements a long time over my career. Your guys' time is worth money. And if we can, could do a master service agreement like this, I think it's going to show a lot of ease. It's going to be, we're going to be able to get to things a lot quicker, so I I'm a hundred percent in favor.
Mr. Chair, Monty, any comment on this master services agreement?
Seems to make sense to me.
No complex of interest?
Uh, no, I, I, um, I've had this reviewed by the attorney's office. Uh, they worked, Houston and our attorney's office worked on the language that that we were comfortable with, so. I I agree, this should, which will help with efficiency. So when we have requests for ditch work coming in, we can respond much quicker than saying, oh, no, we don't have staff availability. We need to go contract it out, go find a contract, you know, a consultant firm, then go renegotiate a contract each time. This should help us respond more quickly.
Mr. Chair, I'm with Commissioner Kapinski. There's no sense reinventing the wheel here. Get this master service agreement in place. I'm going to make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the master service agreement. Um, any other discussion, otherwise I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But was carried.
Well, that's all that I had prepared, but if there's any questions, I happy to answer at this time, so.
Go ahead, Joe.
Chris, we're going to schedule a road tour. Could you stick around and and help us? Chris, we're gonna schedule a road tour, could you stick around and, and help us with dates?
Sure, thanks.
Alright.
No, I was just gonna ask how many collectors, if you could bring that back next time for the four hundred and eighty foot versus three thirty, I'm just kidding. I was thinking, your report's coming next time, so.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're actually working on a highway department annual report tonight, we're finalizing the numbers, so I hope to bring that to you here soon.
Alright. Okay, alright, thanks, Chris. Commissioner Concerns, um, I see we got one from Commissioner Kapinski, discussion on board updates to employees. Yes, uh, I brought this to Monty and we've been having all of these, uh, um, like just director reviews and stuff like that, and, and our biggest biggest item that we see is just communication, I mean, and, and I think no matter if you're the best communicator, there's always room for improvement. So, uh, one of the things I, I was thinking is, is what happens if we lead by example and we communicate with the employees um, of the county and even the taxpayers of the county, a little bit more about what we're doing and what, what our goals are and how we're trying to move the county along, whether that's, you know, every month or every quarter or something like that, that would be up to everybody to decide, but you know, just kinda lead by example in the communication, and, and basically, this communication, I mean, everybody sees what we're doing up here, but then when you look at, that's part of our job, and people don't realize all the committees we're on. And if we bring all of this information, like, I'm gonna bore people a little bit with radio stuff here in a little bit, but it's extremely important to what is going on with funding and how we keep this armor system going. And, and I think employees need to understand that there's way more than what we do right here and, and how it's affecting the county. So that, that's what I was just, uh, gonna try and get across and see what you guys' thoughts are.
So, I'm not sure that I understand, so you're meaning like, uh, what was, it was a number of years ago, we discussed having a countywide newsletter, you know, that kinda went by the wayside because I think we had turnover and stuff like that, something like that, or, or just, you know, I, I'm a little cautious if we're gonna have verbal communication with somebody's, you know, somebody that works in highway, just because they're sitting here. And that, I believe, should go through Chris and my, you know, if, if we have a, a staff person or somebody that's working, you know, in that department, I don't know if, if we should be communicating with them, but we should be communicating through Chris.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to, uh, communicate directly to employees.
Okay.
I, I'm more saying, um, let's just say that we got the solid, cause I asked you earlier, solid waste committee. What is going on on that, you know, and, and if there's anything that's really important that everybody needs to know, because as we all know, it's a trickle down effect on everything that happens, you know, there's, everything we do has a pro and a con, and the con is, it's probably gonna cost money, and where's that money coming from, so it affects other areas of the county, and I'm just saying that if we give almost like a hundred thousand foot view of what we're doing, and it keeps everybody kinda in tune of what, what is really going on on all parts of the county.
So now my suggestion is that you got suggestion how we do that?
Uh, well, I, I, I actually do, I, I mean, if we, if, if us as commissioners, we just put together just a a brief quarterly update on what our boards and, and, and stuff are doing, and we can just take the high level
Right.
uh, information, and maybe we can give it to we, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be our own newspaper, uh, but, you know, I think we start with actually the employees, see how that goes, maybe it's just an inner office email and stuff like that on, on commissioner updates, and if it if it gains ground, maybe we look at doing something later on in the Herald to let everybody know.
Any comments, Monty? Uh, yeah, we could do a countywide email, that's easy. I was also thinking, you know, one thing you might wanna think about is possibly just recording a video. You know, and we could, we could put our video on the internet, so people could see you and hear you, you know, that's another option. You know, if it's, it takes time to write stuff out, if you wanted to do a video, that might be another way of getting the message out, and, uh, people could watch it whenever.
Yeah, I'm open for anything, but I can tell you, I just had a meeting, or not a meeting, but a gathering with all my neighbors, and they asked me, what in the heck do you do? You know, I mean, and I'm serious.
Sure, um, yeah, Mister Chair and Commissioner Kapinski, what, uh, just thinking out loud here, um, you know, maybe it's a little bit of a rework to our commissioner meeting updates, and maybe we highlight a commissioner at each meeting. Instead of, you know, maybe it's, this is your meeting to update, and you're gonna update on the five or six or eight or ten committees that you were on in a little more detail.
Yep.
Instead of spreading it out over the five of us, I, I'm just thinking out loud. If that's a, if that's maybe an opportunity, because again, that's recorded, it's live, for people to get a hold of.
I just, I, I don't know if people will actually take time to go through the meeting and, and re.
Well, we could, we could always, yep, go into that video and just capture that segment, and we could plant, we could plant that piece on our internet. You can do that with videos, I mean, you can.
I think anything we. Is moving forward.
Like a, like a highlight of, oh, this is Commissioner Kapinski's updates session, boom, here's the video of his five or ten minute update.
Yeah.
Cause I'm gonna say, I, I don't believe seventy percent of the county understands what a commissioner really does. And, and I'll, a, as somebody that ran for election, I didn't realize what a commissioner did, and, and I, and I thank everybody before us because it's, there's a lot of work that's involved.
Sure.
I, I think that's a great idea, um, you know, my, my suggestion would be to make sure we keep it short enough, so you keep them in tune long enough to get the full details.
Yeah.
Correct.
You know, if it gets too long, they're gonna turn it, they're gonna tune out.
You know, one of the things that we got going that we should be bragging about is the Benton Economic Development. That, that is a very big.
She is getting, you know, she's getting out there through the Sauk Rapids Herald, and, and, you know, she could be one you could feature, I guess.
Exactly.
I think that, that may be a good opportunity for her to come in and present quarterly on what's going on.
And she will.
Video snapshot of during our meeting.
Okay.
That's all I got. Then we'll move to commissioner meeting updates, uh, let's see, we'll start, Beth, you wanna start this time? You usually pick right or left, so I'm gonna go right this time.
Oh, boy, I didn't bring anything along today. I was on the Career Solutions Board last week, and, um, they're working at fine tuning some of their, um, objectives and to more fit their, their mission view. I'm not sure if that was RSVP or if it was careers, I think. I think it was the careers one. Maybe that was, I think that was RSVP when I got careers this week. So I think that's basically all we've had since last week.
Since last, oh, you've been on, uh, it would've been, been on, uh, we're three weeks through since the sixteen.
Oh, three weeks, oh. And I'm sure I did have a career solution one in there. I didn't get to the Transportation Alliance one last week because of the meeting. I think that's basically about it.
Okay, Scott?
Um, I had a relatively light last few weeks, we had, I had a couple trainings, one with AMC on the seventeenth, that was after our last meeting. Uh, Beth and I had our TRICAP orientation together with, uh, Lori Schultz at, uh, TRICAP, that was a lot of good information, I think we were on for about an hour and a half, and that updated, I learned a lot more about TRICAP that I never knew anything about, so that was good.
Um, it's history.
What's that?
Lots of history.
Yeah, absolutely, and then also, I, I, I'm not sure who else attended, but the Quarterly Business Report with King Banyon, kinda had that on in the background. Informational, you know, I, some of it was, uh, and what's the word I want, uh, important to us, some not so much, I, there was just a lot of information there that was kinda above and beyond my head and what we need to know about, but it was good information, so, and then we just had our call meeting, so I had a pretty light last few weeks.
Okay, Jared? So, um, obviously we had our last seminar with the AMC. Um, that was, uh, interesting, it starts to all blend together at the end, you know, so I, I'm not gonna lie, that one there didn't do a lot for me, cause I, I kinda lost interest. I'll let you kinda go over that career solutions.
Oh, you can start, I can fill in too, it don't matter.
Well, basically, the, the, the career solutions, we had a seven thirty, uh, meeting. Uh, it was kind of, how do I put this, it, it was new to me, even though I've used career solutions a lot on, on from a business standpoint, and even when, when, um, uh, I was looking for a new position, I had to go through them, so it was just an hour long, and they had a, uh, they had some speakers on there from the state, and kinda gave updates and, and stuff like that, so I think, I think they need to do more of them. I'll let you, I, I didn't get a lot out of that, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, and actually, that was, it was more set up as a District Thirteen meeting.
Yeah.
Is what it was, so all of our elective officials were on, five or six of them were on that meeting. And talked about career solutions at all. They just talked about everything in general.
Yep.
And basically, all I got out of it is that they gotta start teaching more civics.
Well, it's funny, you see, yeah, I, I didn't, yeah, I, yeah, there's a lot of history that's being lost, is what we'll call it.
Yeah, you know, one, one other thing to add to that meeting is that there's a bill trying to make the teachers an, an essential employee.
Good point, yep.
You know, they're trying to add the teachers to that too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, um, one thing about the career solutions, they showed a bunch of the video clips of what each section does, and, yeah, with the part with the education, that was awesome, if we could our, we need teachers that are able to see their qualities and develop it, starting in our early age and for what they wanna be doing in the future.
They're, the teachers are definitely, uh, they're being forced to, basically, this, 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 uh, uh, what they really updated on was, was about the history and where they're gonna start teaching the history from, and once they start teaching that history, that, that plan is put in place for like ten years, so it's important to I, you know, in history, my, my point is, I think you gotta follow everything to where you got to today, not forget about half of it and then move on, and that's, that's really what, what they're starting to look at doing, so. But that was that meeting, I'll move on, you can kinda, if you wanna give up more later on. I've had a couple planning sessions with, uh, Emergency Radio, and I, I thank you, Steve, for giving me this committee, because, uh, we've got, we've got, uh, webinars coming up in August thirteenth, uh, no, April thirteenth, April twenty seventh, May eleventh, May twenty fifth, June eighth, and June twenty second, and they're all two hour planning sessions, so that's just for the next three months, they'll continue.
So you know I get those, uh, alerts too.
Yeah, uh, once again, I thank you, but it is something that I, I kinda know, and, and I like to, like to catch up on and, and stuff like that. Uh, a good thing is, is the, the, the fees are decreasing from the nine one one, from point ninety-five to eighty percent, however, the PSAP funding is gonna be going up. And they, one of the biggest questions was, is, um, and that's starting July one, uh, they, they all feel that this is sustainable.
Okay.
So, that was, that was a big question, is, is this just gonna be temporary for six months to a year, or is this gonna be sustainable? And all the, the higher ups said that they believe it'll be sustainable. Um, there was training, uh, uh, dispatcher two courses that were paid for by the regional area. Uh, I did email Sheriff Heck, or Sheriff Heck, and he actually had people going to that training. And I, so that, that was a good thing, he was already on that. Um, I went through after that, there was a new commissioner training that MICA and, uh, the rest of the board put on. That was, that was very helpful, uh, one of the things that we learned is the armor system that actually Mister Heck referred to today, uh, and after doing some more meetings and research and everything, the armor system that we're currently on is the most robust system in the country, from Motorola, it's by far the most robust. There is actually one county out of all the counties that is not on the armor. Anybody know which one that might be? Red Lake, and I'm currently working on potential towers there, so, which is gonna help with the state getting on that, which is a good thing, so, um, that's really it for the, for those meetings. I did have a chance to talk about an hour yesterday with Michael Myers on the fiber to Foley, and, uh, we made some good progress there, um, got some underlining stuff on what, what's going on with his side and everything, so I'll be bringing that a little bit forward. I did talk to the Public Works Director and Fire Chief of Foley, um, uh, Mark Papenfuss for about an hour, uh, last week about this same deal, so it's, it, we're gonna start making some, making up some meeting dates and, and move this forward. Like I said, I, I think it's a no brainer for the county and the city of Foley. That's what I got.
Okay, well, actually, I didn't have any meetings, but I was doing the commissioner job just about every day. So I've been working, uh, with career solutions and with Tammy, uh, trying to work with Dee about reopening, uh, doing some phone calls, talked to a few of our District Thirteen representatives, and that was kind of one sided, you know. And had a lot of meetings with the city, Jared, really?
Yep.
Somehow.
I've had a lot of conversations there.
Yeah, you know, so I probably had like fifteen so-called commissioner meetings, I would call them, you know, just a lot of, a lot of telephone.
Yeah.
Telephone and Zoom with all our representatives, and it is fun, it is enjoyable.
Right, get to form relationships.
Yep, correct, you know, and they all know us, but believe it or not, they know the new people too, they know, they know everybody. They do their homework too, just like what we should be doing, so.
Okay. Um, okay, so going way back on the sixteenth, I had a library board meeting at five o'clock, with, we started with the finance and personnel, and we started at six. Um, from the finance, we're just getting into the twenty twenty-two budget. Finance Committee agreed that we will have neutral increases to all counties. Um, and we're gonna go back and look at that, I think on the fourteenth, we're gonna have a meeting. Um, I'm okay with neutral increase, or, um, to all counties, except we're gonna use revenues, and revenues were generated by counties, so, um, Wright County is gonna have the largest increase based on population, usage and tax capacity dollars. And they're, they're gonna demand, I think it's about eighty-seven thousand dollars would have been their increase in their deal. And ours would have been rough, relatively small, so we're gonna use reserves to fund a larger portion of Wright Counties than we're gonna do to fund Benton, Todd and Morrison, so I, I don't know how we're gonna work that out. Whether we just grab so much, if, if the plan works, I think we could be a negative, because we'll have to use enough reserves to push Wright County to the, to the zero mark. That was one thing. They did increase, um, they did have, uh, looking at increasing hours from, for all libraries, that was brought up by, um, the county commissioner from Todd County. Um, and then with the, the new lease agreement and stuff like that, they actually spent, Karen sent me an email, she goes, whoa. She goes, did you know that the board last night spent in excess of close to a million dollars, more money? So, how we're gonna work that through the budget, we, some of it will be budget neutral, but some of it will not be. So, but we do have, I think right now, we're carrying a pile of money over, we have eleven million dollars in the bank or something. So, uh, we'll start in on that process on the fourteenth. Um, and then we went to the twenty-fifth, and we had the BEP mi, uh, meeting that's in the morning, that morning. Um, BEP's off and running and everything's working good, uh, we did approve to, to, uh, the executive committee approved it, and then the full board approved to hiring an Amanda, a, a part-time intern.
So that should work out.
Uh, Mr. Chair, is that gonna be through a grant process?
Through a grant process and she's got great connections with Saint Cloud State, somebody that's in the program. I guess the professor at Saint Cloud State's already got somebody that will work for you, you know, that type of deal. So that's good, um, membership, we're down to a handful that haven't paid, I think we're up to a hundred and six.
What do you think?
Of what, some of them? Um, a couple of them we're not probably gonna get, we kind of come to resolve that we're not gonna get them. Um, they're gonna be at one tonight to see what, what's the holdup there, um, and the new ones, you know, some of them we're not gonna keep, we know that, it was because of the CARES funding. Um, so that part is, um, you know, they're, she's working on a couple of deals, I know that she's got going on that will, you know, today, tomorrow, next couple days. Um, what else, Monty was there too, what else did we approve? Seems like I'm missing. Some, something else that I was approving besides, and, um, just so you know, Falcon Bank offered the person an office space at no additional cost.
Oh.
So we bring somebody else in, yeah, John Herges said he had something like that, then in that evening, I had the, the one water, one plan meeting. Uh, it just goes on monthly and I was gone, I was away from home, so I took everything along and I could only get on my phone, so it was pretty much, uh, um, they haven't done a lot, everything's going back for final approval for the JPE and, and stuff like that, so they're moving on, it sounds like. Maybe next year at this time, they're gonna wrap this one up and we'll have to appoint, um, people, one person to that, um, I don't know what, they're not calling it a board, they're calling it a policy committee. Probably for that, so.
Policy committees again, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I was surprised a little bit Jerry didn't bring up that, um, with the Mississippi one today.
Wanted to touch that.
He didn't wanna touch that, okay. So, um, and that was all that I had.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, so going back to Commissioner Johnson about, uh, the King Banyan report, that was basically on unemployment.
Yeah.
You know, where the unemployment falls, where it is, and we're actually doing really well.
Yeah.
From Minnesota, you're three point eight percent or something like that, three point nine, it was like, really?
Yeah.
I, I couldn't believe that.
Everybody's looking for people.
Everybody is, that is correct, you know, but.
Okay. Um, I'll move, set committee of the halls, you got?
Yes, we got a bunch, we got a bunch. Yeah, trying to package some things together, you know, so it makes good use of your time.
Next week is turkey hunting, just letting you know.
So, as you know, Jerry wants to talk to the board about the Mississippi River watershed and possibly dividing it up and what makes sense there. Um, also, uh, I, here's what I like to package together, is, uh, a meeting with Amanda to talk about this concept of, of business attraction brokers. And talking to Amanda, there's several other topics she'd like to address with you as well, particularly the, um, the Verso site and some opportunities there. So, uh, and gosh, I hope this date works for you. Uh, what they've suggested between the two of them would be the nineteenth, uh, that's a Monday. Monday the nineteenth would be the best date I can find between that would work for both Amanda and Jerry. Uh, what time works for you all, Monday the nineteenth?
Morning.
Does Monday the nineteenth work for everybody, works for me?
Nine o'clock.
Nine, what, nine o'clock?
Nine. That's great, okay, Monday, so we're gonna go.
So it's gonna be BEP Soil and Water.
Nineteenth at nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so yes, uh, mo- various topics Amanda would like to address with you.
Monty, do you have an idea approximately how long you'd expect that to go?
You know, I would, would budget at least ninety minutes on that one, yeah, yeah, at least ninety. Okay, uh, thank you, okay, next one. The human, I see Bob's here, the Human Services Department would like to talk to you about the possible addition of, of homeless shelters in Benton County. Uh, apparently, there's one, in particular, it's pending before the city of Saint Cloud, they're like, they're board of adjustment. And the Human Services would like to talk to you about the impact of that on Benton County and so on and so forth. Um, I'd like to package that also with a tour of the Human Services building, uh, next door to us. Uh, uh, hu- Human Services thought we should invite Matt Glazeman, who's the Planning Director for the City of Saint Cloud, to talk to you about what's pending in front of them. The date that's gonna work for Matt is the twelfth. Uh, the best date looks like it's gonna be the twelfth, although the thirteenth is an option too. Uh, so we would be in the morning of the twelfth or anytime the thirteenth.
Steve?
Okay, Mr.?
And I should just mention is that I know this matter before the city of Saint Cloud is coming up quite soon. That's why there's a little bit of urgency on the issue of the, the homeless, the shelter application.
Go ahead.
I believe that was mid, mid-April that that's coming up, so.
I've just got a few comments for us on that.
Yeah, the reason for this is April twentieth, this meeting is gonna take place. And, uh, it, it is about moving people around the homeless population. But I think that the board really needs to understand the impact of what all these things are happening in Benton County. And I, I brought it to the board in the past where we have homeless facilities, we have, um, facilities that bring people in as far as, uh, mental health and so forth, and I think it's important for us to be on this committee of, of Saint Cloud Committee that we speak for Benton County because, uh, you, a- as we've talked, Monty and I talked yesterday. All these things are in Benton County in that, that area and at some point in time, yeah, if you build it, they'll keep coming, if you build it, they'll keep coming. So I think that it's important for us to have a say in how this is being, the decisions are being made. And we just simply can't sit back and not have our word and say, no, this should be spread out through the whole region, not simply Benton County, cause it's not your county. And it's convenient to us to have it in your county, so.
Right, and the, and the impact that it has on our county.
Yes.
So what about the twelfth or the thirteenth then?
I'm not a town, but I can do a Zoom if we're able to.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
I would prefer the thirteenth, but I, if it's on Monday, I'd probably have to zoom in.
Steve? Turkey hunting, you said?
You know.
Zooming, you're blind?
Yes, I can.
It's, uh, you know, so is that whole week kinda bad for most folks? Is that?
Uh, we, we don't have a lot of choices here because of the.
Yeah, I understand again that, that, uh, you just said that, that the issue is the city of Saint Cloud Board of Adjustment is on the twentieth. And I think the question is, does Benton County wanna have like, kind of a position on this issue that you could present to that Board of Adjustment? I think that's, that's the question.
I think that's very key.
Yeah.
We, we have to.
With later in that week help?
Thirteenth in the morning?
Does it need to be a daytime, could it be a six P M. meeting, could it?
You know, the one, unfortunately, all we got from Matt Glazeman was he, he said he was available on the twelfth or the thirteenth. We didn't get, I don't have any additional dates, so we could, we could pick a different date, we just don't know if it's gonna work for Matt. I guess if it doesn't, it doesn't, um, so.
Could, uh.
I think probably it's more important for you all to be there rather than just for Matt to be there.
Or maybe assign two people for this specific instance and we can fill the two people up i- as far as what we need and then we can bring it at a later date too. I don't know, I, I, we can re- meet per Roberts rules with just two board members.
Correct. So I'm sorry, are, are most dates the week of the, the twelve out?
I, I can make the thirteenth in the morning.
I could do the thirteenth.
I can do thirteenth.
Yep. Well, that's wonderful, okay, thank you very much.
So nine A M. on the thirteenth?
Nine A M. on the thirteenth?
The better.
Okay. The thirteenth at nine, thank you very much for doing that. Okay.
And would you expect a couple hours there?
Um, again, we're, the, and then would be again, the tour of next door to, I would say, uh, a little over an hour, just a little over an hour or so, yeah.
Yes.
Uh.
Yeah.
So be.
I would just say budget ninety minutes again.
So being with the tour next door, is that something I could buy out of the?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well then, I guess, I guess I can, and Steve's not gonna be here.
Well, I'm gonna be the thirteenth, but, but if it gets to be eleven o'clock, uh.
Yeah.
Jared's not gonna be here.
And Jared's not gonna be here, I guess.
I bet Bob would love a private tour with Jared at some point.
Commissioner Kapinski, can you join us but remotely?
Yeah, I can.
So we'll get you the, we'll get you the link for, okay, for go to, all right.
Also love a turkey drumstick.
We could, we could probably just, uh, redo the tour timeframe different. You know, just make sure that we get in the meeting right away at nine.
We can do that anytime after one of these board meetings or whatever, so.
You know, why, yeah, you know, moving on is, um, let's go on into the road tour, Chris, you got some dates for a road tour?
Um.
June?
June, okay. Um, Wednesday the twenty eighth? A- a- and so usually these last three hours or so, cause we're, we're touring the whole.
When do you normally start, Chris?
We usually start nine, eight o'clock in the morning sometimes, so depends on how hungry you are by midday, if we stop for lunch, so.
Twenty eighth works for me.
I gotta check one thing, but possibly, is there any other date?
We could move it, uh, are you okay moving into, to May?
Uh, we're getting closer to June.
If you get to the middle of May.
Um, the, Wednesday the twelfth? Or, uh, we get, oh no, we don't have board meeting that Tuesday. Tuesday the eleventh?
That would be good.
That works.
You said that we have a board meeting the eleventh?
We do not, I thought we did, no, we have it the week before, so I usually block out tho- every Tuesday morning for something, so.
Okay.
That the eleventh works for me.
Eleventh worked for you, Beth?
I think so.
May eleventh.
May eleventh?
May eleventh.
And we would start here at?
Nine, unless you wanna start earlier, nine, then three hours gets us to, to right around noon, so.
I was hoping, Chris, is we could also swing by East Gate and the board, since you're all gonna be together and we usually go somewhere near Saint Cloud, we could just swing by there and take a quick tour of East Gate facility.
Okay.
Knock that one out, yeah.
So I, yeah, I, I, I'd be prepared to at least be here till noon, um.
Yeah, so we'd start here.
Yeah, we'd start here.
Back here.
So nine to noon on Tuesday, May eleventh.
Yeah.
So we're including at the, as we captioned that, also an East Gate tour. I guess I got one more, uh, wanna set the BEP quarterly meeting as a committee of the whole. And that is April twenty second, seven thirty to nine at Jack and Jim's, and we'll, we'll register everyone for that. Breakfast concluded with your registration, April twenty second, seven thirty to nine.
Twenty second, you said?
Yep.
April twenty second?
Yes, sir. Yep. Seven thirty to nine, Jack and Jim's. I don't know if it's gonna be, I would imagine it's gonna be in their event center next door and I.
I would think.
It wouldn't be in the restaurant, yeah. And they're still looking for, anybody who wants a sponsor, they're still looking for a sponsor for that, it's four hundred bucks. So that's all we have, we just need a motion to get those scheduled.
Approved, committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion been made in second to set the committee of halls, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business coming before the board? We're adjourned.
Thanks, Chris and Mark.